I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, Jamie Cruz isn't feeling well, so she won't be here tonight. We were under the impression that Richard would be. Hopefully, he'll arrive soon. So, we'll discuss board business in the interim. One of the things on the agenda tonight was to interview two candidates for department clerk. Pills and payroll, we just took care of. Draft minutes?
Yep, there are two sets of draft minutes, and then there is also an inspection report from Cooper Farm Estates. They got lost in my email and never got in front of you to be accepted.
Okay, so I reviewed the minutes. Unfortunately, I came here for an earlier meeting. I missed, so I left my package at home. But I had reviewed the minutes. Anybody else?
I'd like to recognize today is December 7th. And your thanks to all our veterans, serving now, previously, and in the future. If I may sneak that in there.
Absolutely. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now, what do you want?
I'm looking for a motion to approve the draft minutes.
I make a motion?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't think we have much more for board business tonight.
The Cooper inspection report and scheduling the senior residential development summit.
Okay. Mark, I just saw you review the Green International report. Did you have a chance to look at it, Peter?
I'm sorry.
The reports from?
No, I haven't. I just sat down.
Take a minute.
And just to reiterate that Luke Boucher will be here when Workers' Credit Union hearing is open to walk you through that 14-page report he did on that.
Actually, it kind of looks like we probably should have them in for some of the stuff that's in here.
They'll, yeah, they'll be able to walk you through. Luke will be able to walk you through where you are now on it and the decisions left for the board in that public hearing.
We're just, this one, this site. This is the Turkey Farm, Cooper Farm, I mean, observation. This one he'll be here for tonight.
Yeah, no, that one's okay. I'm talking about the Cooper.
Yeah, I'm glad he's coming tonight.
There's enough in here that maybe we need to bring the Cooper people back.
Workers. That's it. That's Cooper.
Sorry about that.
Do you want to do the illustration? We just send a majority for the interviews, right?
Right.
Right, it's not a special permit, so.
I'll accept the motion to accept the Green International report for Cooper Farm Estates. I'll second that. You'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to accept the Green International report on Cooper.
You need me again?
Can you second it?
I will.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. No, I haven't made, that's the first vote I've ever had on Cooper in my...
It's just to accept the report.
Okay.
Department clerk, two candidates.
Okay, and Eskman Human Resources is here to walk us through the process. I don't know if you've met the board members yet or not?
Ed Mullin.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well. Two candidates for department clerk will be at the meeting. Application for two. So, we have Fairchild and how do you say the last, the other name? Taha Kamakun. Are they both present?
Paul is here. I don't see Janet.
She was hit over 6.45.
45. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, no particular, we have a few questions. Let's get started.
Good job.
Paul, please come forward. How are you?
Good, hey, John.
Good. Thanks for applying. So, we understand that we have to ask the same exact questions to each candidate, so we're just going to pass this sheet of paper back and forth. Starting with question one.
And you don't have to do all of them.
What's that?
You don't have to do all of the questions.
You can pick anyone you wish out of the, or none at all. Just pick to ask the next person the same thing. Correct?
Correct, I just have to ask the same thing.
In a small office, working independently is essential. Can you please relate to us a situation where you applied your problem-solving capabilities to resolve a problem on your own?
Sure. Most recently, I've been working in the Department of Elder Human Services. My most recent job there was as a driver, but originally, I started as the clerk who was taking phone calls for rides and so forth. That was where I was originally hired. So, I was working in that office. Every day was an opportunity to solve a variety of issues that would come up. If it was, you know, somebody needing an immediate ride to a doctor's appointment or something like that, having to interface with drivers and the schedule to make sure that the rides were taken care of adequately. Often, you know, spur of the moment, problems would come up. If, say, a driver was stuck someplace or something, I'd have to arrange to make sure, you know, either that the client was informed that their ride wouldn't be arriving on time or having to schedule the other driver to try to get over there or however to take care of that problem. Sometimes it would require me, because if the person was at the doctor's appointment or something like that, I would have to, you know, figure out where that office was or something like that and take care of it that way. Other times, it would be solving a computer problem in the office. Even though that wasn't necessarily part of my, you know, my requirements for the job, you know, I would step in and try to, you know, make sure that the, you know, the computer would operate correctly or, you know, talk to Nancy and make sure, you know, she was informed or something like that, just to make sure that the problem got solved.
Thank you. Mark, any questions?
You live in Littleton, is that correct?
I do.
How long have you lived here?
Five years.
Where'd you come from?
California.
We're reading off a sheet of paper for questions.
Oh, I can ask him any questions I want. I'm just going to ask the other person the same ones.
That's why we have a printed list of questions, so we make sure.
So, I can't remember them?
If you can remember them by only...
Where'd you come from? How long have you been here?
This is a good one, and I don't even know how I would answer it. This position encompasses many duties, and while some, like meetings and meetings with officers can be interesting, the basic clerical functions can be rather unexciting. How do you handle mundane tasks like filing and transcribing minutes while maintaining a positive and productive demeanor?
You know, I've worked in those kinds of positions a lot. I mean, I, all jobs have some kind of tasks that aren't the most fun or interesting.
Sexy.
Well, yeah, right. But if you keep your eye on the larger, on the larger issue at hand, you know, you're serving, I'm serving, you know, the needs of this board. I'm serving the needs of the office. And, you know, the needs of the town, you keep, you realize that whatever the task is that you're doing, get it done and get it done efficiently and professionally. And I take a lot of pride in getting that done and making sure there aren't mistakes or, you know, that I'm not, you know, shuffling off something because it's not an interesting, you know, task or something. It's, I take pride in that.
Your turn.
I already asked mine.
Okay. Would you ask another one from the list, please?
Well, then, this one might cover some of the questions you already answered for me. We've all read your resume and cover letter, but could you please briefly tell me something about yourself that your mom doesn't know? No, no, I'm only kidding. Something about yourself that we wouldn't be able to read from your resume. What was that?
I moved to Littleton in 2012, and six months later, I was working for the town of Littleton. Even before I got to the town of Littleton, I noticed that the town, the television, the public television station was looking for a logo. I immediately got involved, and I, you know, I'm, my other trade is I'm a graphic designer. So, I sent in my ideas for their logo. Happily, it was chosen as the logo for the station. So, immediately on getting to Littleton, I got involved. Across the street, a neighbor of mine is heavily involved in Littleton. She's lived here all, you know, for a very long time. And she asked me to apply for that position in the Elder and Human Services Department. I did, and I've been working there ever since.
Can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Let me ask him.
Absolutely.
I was looking at him. What's the worst job you've ever had in your entire life? And I will follow that up with another question.
All right. The worst job, the worst job I ever had in my entire life was doing phone call-ups asking for donations for a Policemen's Union Party or something like that, where they weren't that closely affiliated with the police, but you were telling people that you were. Hated that.
How long did you last here? What was the reason for your...
Oh, no, I, I don't know. I lasted there, I don't know, a couple of months, maybe? A month, maybe? Something like that. And I left because I got another job.
Good, thank you.
All right, can I ask a question?
Sure.
We're kind of spoiled, because Maren does such a great job at doing our minutes and keeping us on the straight and narrow.
Yep.
What do you think are your best attributes to follow in her footsteps?
Well, I know that I would have a lot to learn from Maren in terms of the position and the way the board works and so forth. I have had a chance to work with a number of people in town. Sam, I think that, I think one of my strong attributes is I'm a patient person. I'm not quick to make judgments or I'm not a rash person, so I, you know, even though things may not be going smoothly, I'm very willing to allow for a lot of just patience to get something done in a way that something needs to get done correctly.
One of the things that makes, that makes Maren stand out is she has the ability to listen to what's being said and still focus on her job. Is that, do you think you could do that, take, and get the, for lack of a better word, flavor of what we're talking about when we're talking about a planning board issue or someone may be upset about something or everything else? Maren's minutes are always right on. She might, there might be a clerical or a spelling or something like that. Considering everything that she does, that's the least of it, but she gets the gist of what we're discussing while she's still doing her job. I mean, so she has a unique ability, and I'm, some people, it's going to take a while to learn it. I get that, but she has the ability to listen and to report back what she's hearing. Is that something you think you would be able to do as well?
I believe I can do. I haven't had a lot of experience doing that exact thing in terms of, you know, like a board meeting or something like that. I think I could definitely do that.
There was a little kudo for you, by the way. Happy Christmas.
Oh, jeez, we didn't recognize that at the beginning.
Merry Christmas. All right, I'm okay. You're, you're going to ask another one off the cheat sheet?
No, of course I am, because they're going to ask the next person the same question. So, I'm writing yours down, so you make sure you ask it again. Communicate both within the department as well as with the public is important part of the master plan. What writing experience do you have, minutes, newsletter, other? And you just answered part of that, saying you don't have much experience doing minutes, but have you written newsletters or have you written anything else in your careers?
Sure. I'm a graphic designer. I work on publications. I do copywriting in these publications every once in a while. Beyond that, while working in the Elder and Human Services Department, I wrote a number of things in there, whether it was help writing grant proposals. I wrote the, I did writing that was in part of the emails that were sent out on the department. Weekly emails that I designed. They were broadcast emails. One was on health and the other was just on the, was on whatever was happening this week. Sometimes there are also special broadcast emails that I sent out on, you know, a variety of events that I would do the writing on, too. Additionally, I worked for the, I was a staff member who was in charge of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I would attend those meetings, and I would assist them in terms of writing sometimes their mission statements and so forth.
Thank you.
I'll say.
All right. All right, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate you applying and coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
You probably shouldn't leave your wall out there.
And Janet is here also.
Creates a bad, kind of, you know.
How are you?
Hi, I'm Janet Fairtrance.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
And I don't know if you've met the board members.
I have not.
Janet, Ed Mullin, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I can read. Peter Scott. Mark Montnory, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for taking the time to meet with me tonight.
Start off with the same question, so.
Okay.
In a small office, working independently is essential. Can you please relate to us a situation where you applied your problem-solving capabilities to resolve a problem on your own?
In this, you're asking specifically in a small office. Most of my, my work was in a large warehouse facility, but even though we had 300-plus employees in my first human resource job, I was the sole human resource person in the facility. So, it was a very small office as far as that went. I was in charge of all of the employee relations, keeping the warehouse folks happy so that we didn't have to... folks happy so that we didn't have, um, a need for a union within the facility. I'm the one who resolved all of, um, any sort of disputes between employees as well as between managers and, um, and the employees as well.
All right. Thank you.
Could you, uh, talk outside?
Folks, can you take the conversation outside? We're trying to conduct an interview, so either keep it down or take it outside. Thank you.
This position encompasses many duties, and while some, like meetings with customers can be interesting, the basic clerical functions can be rather unexciting. How do you handle mundane tasks like filing, transcribing minutes while maintaining a positive and productive demeanor?
I thrive on being organized and, um, keeping things where they're supposed to be. So some of that mundane piece is actually sort of what makes me tick. I have six children and, um, the organization of our mudroom, keeping everything where it needs to be and being able to identify where things are at a first grab is something that I find, um, enjoyable and gives me some positive, um, feedback myself. So, yes, it's mundane, but if it's, um, done properly and done the way it's, on a timely manner, then it, it does give its own positive feedback to me.
Well, on that note, do you have a picture of your mudroom?
I should.
Yeah, I'd like to know whether it's clean and concise and.
It is. I could tell you exactly how we set it up.
Ages of children?
They go from seventeen to twelve.
Both busy.
Two sets of twins. Two sets, yes. So we are, we are a very efficiently-run family, so.
I have twin sisters.
You can throw stuff at me.
I know what you're up against, I'm one of eight. So, uh.
Good for you.
Where do you live?
I live in Westford.
How long have you lived there?
I have lived there for twenty years now.
Okay. My next one, which I have to stick to the, the protocol of sorts, is use, you all, which ones did you guys use? Does, which one was mine? We've read your resume, oh yeah, tell me, what can you tell us something about yourself that's not in your resume?
Okay.
And then I follow.
Aside from my, uh, my mudroom? Let's see. I think I don't have in my resume that I spent ten years taking the minutes on Conservation Commission in Westford. I did that in the evenings while the children were younger, um, so I.
Not resume stuff, something that we don't know about you.
I said it's not in my resume.
I know, but it's something aside for.
Something, oh, different.
Some fun.
Okay. Something fun.
Yeah.
I am a huge advocate of Pinterest, not sure if you're familiar with Pinterest. It is, um, a wonderful way of finding new projects and new, uh, it's online. And I created a stone walkway, um, looking at this picture, I should have drawn a picture for you, out of river stones, all designed, um, in dragonflies and flowers and, um, with field stones, all mixed in, interspersed as my walkway from my driveway to my back patio.
Neat. Now I'll ask my final question, then I'll be out. What's the worst job you've ever had? Were you thinking about it 'cause you were here when I asked you, correct?
I walked in, as he came in, and I thought, wow, you know, that's hard.
The worst?
The worst, the absolute worst.
Always down to ten years old and mom made you do something.
All the way back. I think I had, um, some hellish children that I used to do day, daycare for. And it was particularly difficult because the parents, um, were not on board with any sort of limit-setting or, um, feeling that the children should be disciplined in any way. And I had, um, a difficult time sort of figuring out how to control the situation without stepping on, um, the toes of the parents.
How did you, um, how did that job end?
Um, I did stick it out.
She killed a kid.
But, um, you know, I think eventually I, I did say to the parents that, you know, it just wasn't, um, it wasn't worth the.
Your sanity?
The F, my sanity, um, that it wasn't a good, we didn't have a good, um, similar direction in how, in how the situation should be handled and it, it was best for me to.
Very good.
Recuse myself of the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As, I don't know if you heard before, I, I praised how great Maren does it, how great her job is. She can listen to the flavor of what we're talking about and put it down on paper and ninety-nine out of a hundred times, she's got everything going. She might miss a thar in the end or something like that. How do you think you'll be able to handle meetings and, and taking notes and things like that? Be able to hear what's going on and then relay in paper what's verbally, um, talked about?
I think my experience with the Conservation Commission's gonna be a huge piece there. I think that, um, similarly, the Conservation Commission, you know, they can sort of get off tangent or somebody in the audience can, can take things in a different offshoot direction and you sort of have to listen to that and weed out the part that's, um, you know, not relevant to the minute, minutes. And I think that while it may have taken me some time to get there with the commission, I certainly by, uh, a few years in was able to figure out, okay, what's the salient pieces that need to be?
So you can weed through the minutia.
Right.
Very good, thank you.
And certainly there were a lot of planning, you know, it's times when the Planning Board and the Commission were sort of, uh, the Conservation Commission were jointly meeting, so.
Final question. Communication both within the department as well as with the public is an important part of the master plan. What writing experience do you have, minutes, newsletters, others? So we know about your minutes with Conservation. Have you ever done newsletters or any other writing?
Um, newsletters would be, um, I was part of the Westford Newcomers, um, Association for ten years and I was on, um, the board for three or four years and the rest of the time I always ran, um, interest groups, so I was continuously, um, submitting monthly newsletter items, articles for that. In addition, just for writing skills in my human resources, um, career, I put together, um, safety policies, job descriptions, um, a whole variety of writing skills. So I'm very, um, confident that I, that you would find my writing solid.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck with them twins.
Twin twins.
What did you, what, what did, uh, what?
Are those fake microphones? I can't hear a word you're saying.
I'm not.
These microphones are for the television. Would you like us to speak up though, Walter?
Yeah, a lot.
Okay. If you'd like, you can sit closer.
They're, they're not for the audience at all.
No, they're, they're just for the television.
Go home and watch us on TV.
Did we deliberate that now or what do we? Yeah, so, we can deliberate and, and think about. So.
And if you have any questions, Anne's here to, to help answer.
I personally felt the second applicant was much more fluid in her, in her statements, her answers. She seemed, uh, seemed to have more, um, you know, more, more on the ball of sorts when it comes to answering the questions and, and, and technical writing and such. In my opinion, I, I was swayed towards the second applicant.
Well, I liked the fact that she had done meetings before and she could kinda weed out the minutia and she understands.
You know the source at all?
What?
Never mind.
I, I, I just think she was a little more experienced and we're gonna be throwing, throwing right on the fire right off the bat, so I kinda thought she was probably a little more qualified.
I know there was, uh, other interviews conducted before these two candidates were selected to be before us. Do we have a recommendation from the people who did the interviews before us?
The screening committee had, thought both of these candidates would be good.
Okay. And the screening committee was comprised of?
Let's see if I can remember. Anne, yes, so the screening committee was comprised of myself, Maren, Carol Hanlon, who's in human resources, and Diane Fickersen, who had studied at Westford Town, done a lot of the similar scores that we'd be asking her to do. And, uh, the candidates came in within ten points of each other. There was one that was, that was definitely higher than about ten percent on the score.
They were both good, but I just think she might have been a little more well-qualified. Anne had been involved in what we do, um, being with the board of the, with the Westford,
I would agree, I would agree. I'd like to say that I thought both candidates were excellent.
Right.
Glad to see that we had something to choose from that was qualified and they both seemed to be energetic individuals, um, both capable of doing the job. But my recommendation would also be the, uh, second interview for Ms. Fairchild. So if I can get a motion?
Make a motion to accept Mrs. Fairchild. Huh? Anne has been a HR department preliminary screening committee, you want me to go with all of that or you want me to read her name?
The, the one that says vote?
Okay, vote. Is he vote?
Janet Fairchild.
Yes.
You want me to read that whole thing? Move that the Planning Board vote pursuant to M. Fairchild, chap forty-one, section eighty-one A, to offer the temporary Planning Department Clerk position to preferred applicant, which is?
Okay, six, seven, eight, of seventy-five per hour.
Ms. Fairchild. Seven fifty-five per hour, approximately ten hours a week, subject to successful completion of all pre-employment background checks. I'll hear a second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Did you hear that, Walter?
Barely.
Who, we hide the girl. Okay?
Me?
The second applicant.
Second applicant.
I'm gonna get to the administrative assistant and tell him you can't have microphones when people that can't hear cannot hear it.
Get off your wallet and buy some good ear, earphones.
These are forty-four hundred bucks.
Get your money back.
Walter. Walter.
You can sit closer.
You can sit, that chair's available. We'd love to have you sit closer so you can hear.
All right, well, if, when the gentleman's gonna do his presentation, I'd like that, if you don't.
Yeah, by all means.
If you do it, get to have an apple, sir.
You can have as many as you'd like.
Is that your wallet under your seat? Walter. Walter, is that your wallet under your seat?
He can't hear you.
Just checking. Seeing if that was your wa, wallet under your seat. He heard you just fine.
So the one thing we haven't decided so far before we get on to the next agenda item is picking a time for the senior development summit.
My guess, guess is that, that's what a lot of people like.
So we need to select a time to have the summit.
Did you just move those oranges?
Nope. Do you want? Yeah.
Just gonna spoon it. No, throw one. What are you doing? Just throw one.
No, it's a peeler, you gotta throw him a peeler.
It's like a rule. Within my reach, I'll catch it. Have you ever had a line that you didn't move yet, yet?
Uh, a few.
All right, just checking.
Um, but before we get on with this, summit, summit, let's talk about this. We need to pick a date. We need to pick a date when we can make Mark travel at the most expensive time of the year to come back.
That'll be right now.
And have our summit, so.
Do you wanna do it after the first of the year, I take it?
Not if you're gonna be gone till the eighteenth.
I will make arrangements to be back here if I have to.
We have our first Planning Board meeting?
Either the fourth or the eleventh, whichever you choose.
Okay, and so only to be here for one of those two. Fourth or eleventh, which one's more convenient for you, 'cause then we'll set up the summit right before it.
Why don't we do the eleventh?
So if we schedule January eleventh, which isn't the best for me, but I'll take it 'cause we'll get him back. Can we push the summit for Monday or Tuesday of that week? Does that give you enough time, Maren?
So that would be even before then, that would be like the seventh?
Well, if you're back on the eleventh, no. Two or three days before that, you can be back on the eighth or ninth.
We need you.
I know.
Or you want to do Wednesday, Thursday?
Do, yeah, do the summit on the tenth and Planning Board meeting on the eleventh or, or technically they could both be the same day, it's just up to your schedules.
Yeah, that'd be a long day. Tenth and eleventh, would that work for you?
Sure.
Thank you. Hopefully it'll work with the other two, uh, board members' schedules.
Well, we.
We know Jamie won't be here.
You never know.
She's having a kid on the seventh, I think.
At that point, she might wanna come.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna catch you for this.
And we'll talk to Richard when he shows up.
If he shows up.
Hopefully soon. But I don't see him coming in the door and he did not respond to the text message.
So, well, let's do the point then.
Okay. We've, we're done with board business altogether now, right? Terrific. Seven-ten A and R supplement, appoint lot four slash five, lot line adjustment.
Hi, Tim Power, Land Strategies. This is the same information that you were presented before, except when we brought it to land court, they decided they had one more comment that they needed to see the entire parcel, whereas the, um, previous plan was only a portion of the site that included the lot line to move, so the vastro plan had the full, uh, extent of the property to match the calculations.
So we already voted this?
We've already already voted and proven it's just.
Do we have to sign that one?
I'll take a motion.
We already approved it.
Yeah, of course.
I approve the change of, that the land court requested and, uh, put it on a bigger piece of paper and so be it and I'll go along with that.
We get paid twice for this? Say second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. How was that?
Thank you very much, Peter. That was efficient, I like it.
So this, movie theater's open, right?
So the guy's open.
I'm gonna just put the Z in there for you?
It's an E.
Well, I, that's a Z.
I'll let you sit down.
I'm sitting. That's it? You're all done? No more?
Happy to answer any other questions, but.
That was then and this is now?
You may as well sit there while, 'cause we've got a few minutes until the next agenda item.
Sure.
How's everything going up there? Cinema's open?
Cinema's open, um, a few more tenants are opening up, um, shortly, some of the fitness people and the base spa that went out, are under construction, so hopefully that'll be open.
How was that, was it title nine, what is that?
Title five.
What about, not title five of the septic system, title nine boxing? Nine rounds on title nine.
What about the hockey ring?
Title box.
Did you decide what you guys?
Title box. The rink?
Yeah.
Uh, because of, um, where we wanted to put it, the cinema was staging, uh, so we decided, you have to make the choice in July to commit to it. And we just weren't sure we were gonna get everybody out of the way, um, and keep the cinema on track.
You said you'd do that for a number of years.
What's that?
You said you were gonna do it for a number of years.
What's that, the rink?
Yeah.
We'd like to bring it back, uh, but this, there's just too much motion this year, so we have had plenty of letters and requests to bring it back.
So you anticipate bringing it back next year?
Yes.
We're gonna hold you to it.
Well, in fairness to them, that they did make the offer to the town to come up with a spot to put it, kind of town ever did, so kinda felt like.
No, they never brought it before us.
Well, not before us, but they did talk it to the selector.
Okay.
Okay. We'll bring it to the selection.
Okay.
Cause that was, that was actually pretty cool.
Yeah, a lot of people really loved it.
A lot of people loved it. We got, we had a lot of response. People had season tickets, so they would go. It was like an everyday thing for them, so we certainly wanna do it again.
Had a lot of positive feedback about the whole project.
Got some tough weather about it though periodically, too.
Brick and mortar. Let's talk a little bit about brick and mortar. In, in the facility, there's some design standards that belong, that the town has drafted in the past.
Yeah.
You guys have several red brick structures within the facility, correct?
Yes.
Could you identify them for me?
Uh, Market Basket Building is red brick and I believe the Marriott has a good deal of.
It is a brick, it's a brick.
How about Anthony's? Is some of the side of Anthony's red?
I don't think there's any traditional red brick. I'm trying to think if there's any masonry pieces in that space, but I think those may be stone, like the stone, but on the exterior. Interior, I don't know, but exterior, I don't think it's any good.
Okay. Just building up for our next conversation.
Yeah, you're on time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Input for the public.
George Sanders, six, seven, two, Great Road. Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, you're talking up there, a lot of people in here don't know what you're talking about and you just sign up on something that says has already been approved or whatever, and then y'all was talking among yourself up there, so nobody in here unless they really knows what's going on. Because I really don't get exactly what's going on. I read what you got up there, but that doesn't tell me what is that you sign up on, what is that the town approved? We think that you need just a little input in here as to what's going on. It would be appreciated.
Absolutely. So I can, I can explain to you what we just did here. So it was an A and R. It's approval not required, so if we did no action on what we did tonight, he would get the approval regardless in twenty-one days. They were just moving a simple lot line at the point, moved the lot line so it helps them accommodate different tenants and different structures. So that's all we were doing. We had already approved it in the last meeting, but the land court wanted a larger drawing of it, so we just redid it tonight, so, okay? Yep?
I was gonna say that. Just not as nice.
Right, I know.
Okay.
Seven fifteen, we're a little over it. Tim, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Continue public hearing, two twenty-five Taylor Street. We can't open it cause we don't have a fourth member.
Right.
So.
If we do, right.
Can we go, open and continue, or just, it doesn't get opened? And folks, whoever are here for the next few hearings, we apologize. We thought we were gonna see the full board. We haven't heard from one of our members. The other member did call in and say they were not feeling well. But we need four to, to continue public, open public hearings, I believe. So we can't take a vote without a, a fourth member.
Could open it.
You would, well, the bridge was gone for.
The first one?
The first one, and only, he can only mullonize for one meeting.
So if he misses this one, he's out.
He's out.
We don't have Jamie probably for this, so the next one.
Right. So you would have to just open and immediately continue without taking any input.
But we didn't take any input last time, really.
Yes, we did. We did take input.
We took input, not from the proponent.
Not from the proponent, correct?
Correct, but that, the hearing was open.
But the hearing was open and comments were made, so, so we're gonna open immediately, continue and, and close the hearing, so.
We can't close it.
Well, I'm sorry, open and continue. And with no discussion.
Problem is you have to continue to date certain. Do you want?
January eleventh.
Do you wanna do it to January eleventh, or, yeah, actually for this one, that would work.
We have to, and we'll make other arrangements I believe, but, so. I don't know. I don't know what else to do, other than open and continue. So no discussion, so.
On the last instance, the pro, the pro, the poser did not show up, correct?
Correct.
And, and that was my misreading of his last email.
He had indicated that he wouldn't be here as opposed to would be here.
I thought we had the wrong date in the paper.
Yeah.
So with that being said.
Make a motion. So how do we open and continue? Just make a motion to continue? It's open?
Yeah, just.
You might wanna tell him it's, yeah.
Well, we just had a loud discussion about it, so. So, two twenty-five Taylor Street, the public hearing's been opened. Can I get a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to.
The, the date was Thursday, January eleventh.
Yes, so January eleventh, next, next meeting.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes, Mr. Sanders.
Jim, George Sanders, six, seven, two, Great Road. Why you can't have a public hearing when the forum requires for the five-member board, or you have a seven-member?
We're five.
Five-member board, which three members is called a forum, and know you have to have a forum to do action. And I'm just trying to understand why you have to have eighty percent of the board.
Yep.
To do a public open.
Okay. Ma, Maureen, explain this one to you. There's a couple of reasons, but she'll explain them both.
Right, right. Actually, the state law requires a super majority on special permits, so they cannot vote. If they vote with only three members here, there's no way to approve. You can only deny it with three, so you have to have four out of five, or four out of four.
Or five out of five.
Or five out of five, correct?
And the other reason that we, we opened it with no public comment is that we might be able to use the, the mullonize rule for one of the members who missed the last meeting. So he missed all the public comment the last time, so we're hoping that because we opened it with no discussion and continued it, that he might be able to do it a second time. We're not sure, but we'll check with town council on that, so.
Thank you.
So now we're gonna sit here and total our sums till seven thirty for our next agenda item.
And that one we have to continue too. So we might as well tell you, the seven thirty is, is out the door as well.
Unless, unless Richard shows up between now and seven thirty. So if you folks wanna give it seven minutes, he might show up and we could open that one, but.
You wanna wait?
No, that's, if you already continued.
Yes.
Our apologies, sorry about that.
See you again.
Thank you.
This is one of the key projects with, these are all the green parts.
Wow, all the butters?
Yeah, all the butters on this one, cause it's the.
Good item.
On the box for our town line, and it has to go to.
Give it seven minutes, we'll see what happens.
The, all the owners.
Still get to Bellum anyway, right?
Oh, the little, uh.
It's lumped up.
The, the condos in Oxboro. Yeah. So there's two project sites in town that are like that. This one and the point with the condo association for the single-family homes up on, in Westford.
Could that, those are condo associations, like all those houses? Really?
Mm-hmm.
They're single fa, they're individual, single-family houses?
Right, but then something about the way the property is owned is.
Is that a Hicks development?
Walter, if you wanna leave, we're not gonna discuss the, we set a date to do it.
Hey, would, you, you guys have any objection to having a audio that the people up here can hear?
No, we can certainly talk to the, the powers that be about getting microphones that actually would project our voice. Am I not speaking loud enough since you've brought it up?
I think frankly, if I, if I go upstairs and tell them, it's a matter of, you know, you can't just leave us in the dark if we can't hear. You know what I mean?
Sure, absolutely.
And so, you know, something needs to be done about it. I've been through quite a few hearings and I strain myself to, but it gets to the point where Marcus is right, you might as well stay home. At least at, at home, you can hear what's going on.
That's a good point, so. But what we're, what I'm trying to say to you is the senior housing, we're gonna meet on that on the.
You're not gonna talk about that today?
No, we, we set a date to bring everybody in for it.
Speak louder, please.
We set a date to bring everyone in for it on the tenth.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have a senior housing development summit with the individuals who are proposing their developments, so we're gonna have a summit on the tenth of January.
January tenth. See you get out early.
Let me comment, I bet for you, is, do you understand your own bylaw? It's very strange.
That's why we're in the middle of.
Uh, what?
We're in the middle of making sure we're all on the same page about it.
Oh, okay.
That's what the summit's all about.
Thank you.
For what?
Coming out.
Yeah. Wait, when's it? Seven thirty, it's over?
This meeting? No, we have another hearing at the eight o'clock, so we gotta sit here for a half an hour after seven thirty to see if our member shows up.
Maureen, I think you should get time to have.
I'll put in for it, thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Good night, Mr. Marcus.
Oh, now I'm getting a mister. You know I'm gonna be upstairs tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll go check the thing and see what they have to offer.
Give him straight, Walter.
Luke, anything exciting you wanna tell us, talk about? Have you done any outside of work that's been going on in your life to share with us?
Nope.
New cars, new shoes, new tires, anything?
No, no.
Paint the house lately? Rake the leaves? Get the leaves done?
No.
Did you kill any, you, uh, fanciful animals lately?
We won't talk about that in public.
Nope.
I don't wanna offend any of my constituents that might be, anybody that doesn't appreciate deer hunting just has to understand that I'm just protecting their vegetables.
Oh, you hunt? He says incredulously. Peter, did you have snow up in Vermont?
Actually, it snowed Sunday morning. It was a real good squall coming down and then proceeded to clear itself on up. Well, it didn't clear up, but it stopped snowing quickly. We, Wayne Banks and I had a little target shooting. It was quite a bit of fun.
Monday. What's the plan for Monday?
It'll be followed by Tuesday.
Yeah.
With gathering light in the morning, darkness in the.
Are you taking the ride into the city?
Um, I hope to, and I haven't heard anything about when it is. I've heard afternoon, but.
I would like to go on.
Yeah, Judy's asking the same question and we don't have details, so we're doing that.
Get in touch with the administrator, make sure we're all approved.
Yeah.
What's this all about? So, Maureen, if you'd like to inform anyone of the good news as far as what, what's occurred.
Yes, Littleton has been chosen as one of six cities and towns as municipal best practice for housing. With the bylaws that were passed at fall town meeting.
With our senior presidential development, inclusion every zoning, and affordable housing trust fund being a package. Bring it all together and understanding that the density needs to occur in order to bring the developers in, and at the same time, design criteria needs to be there to control the age of occupants. So that was the invitation.
That is a direct.
Result of the hard work that this planning board has done along with our consulting, our administrator, the input of the master plan, the master plan information committee, all those who support.
Council on Ating, Urban Services.
Hey, somebody just buzzed you, was that, um?
Hopefully it's Richard.
I doubt it.
It's not Richard.
I'm gonna need to, uh, address that issue.
Yes. Frequent. Seven thirty. I'll accept the motion to open and continue the public hearing for one nineteen Russell Street Workers Credit Union.
Make a motion to, uh, open the meeting and continue it?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have another half an hour. What should we discuss until eight o'clock?
I suggest we.
Now we have an eight-thirty preliminary subdivision to talk about also, so we're stuck here till eight-thirty, but unable to do any of the board's business because we're. We open and continue.
We don't have four.
We don't have four. I apologize. It's, we.
We don't know why you're.
Do you guys mind if I bring my client center? We just chat about procedure? No, nothing to do with the project?
Or, or site planning, even?
Yeah, we do site plan. Well.
No, just procedure. That's just the procedure.
I need to ask you a legal question. I guess I'm a little under. Special permits. If a special permit is denied, is there a two-year or a term like there is on there?
I'm being called. It's the second one in the row.
You can refile with the permission of the board.
That permission would be covered by a super.
Be the final form to be put together. Mr. Kim, I'm gonna tell him this. And put somebody else in there.
It's just permission of the board for an application, so I think that would just be.
That's fine to be considered if you need a board to vote, or is it?
Let's say it, special permits denied. I'm applying, or I'm walking yours, I reapply.
We'll be able to do that.
Can I do that? I know with the variance you can, unless you make a substantial change to the.
We, we gotta replace one together.
Saying you have a special.
Yeah.
Let me grab my client's.
Appoint somebody, let us, let us appoint somebody on the interim, because we can't keep doing this. I agree. I do agree. What I do think is that we'll take, I'll take the afternoon tomorrow to speak to both members. One minute, Richard, uh, George.
Yeah, state law outlines the process for appointing a new member. It's a joint appointment, planning board and board of select, or remaining planning board members and board of selection.
But we know she's not coming to January, because we know she's having a baby, which means February's probably out and March is probably.
But, but, that, that's the process.
Right. No, and I agree, but we need to probably.
Been having babies for thousands and thousands of years. At least nine, two thousand, twenty seventeen years.
And I think her due date is like the seventh, so that means you know the eleventh is out.
Well, I've never had to have one. I don't wanna go into this. Tell me, good evening. You'll recall Doug Peterson, Robert Lockett, from Workers Credit Union, Matt Blackham from the Blackham Group, and Brian Droop from the thing.
So, before you start, our apologies, gentlemen. We thought we were gonna see the full board tonight. I'm not sure what happened. We hope Richard's okay, first of all, but our apologies.
Thank you. And obviously, we're not presenting. We'd just like to talk to you a little bit about what this means from a procedural timing standpoint, because my clients are faced with certain deadlines in terms of go-no-go decisions here. And I understand Jamie, you know, those, those tables must do well, cause when, she said last time that she was gonna be out in January. I thought she was going on extended vacation, but I understand it's a very different reason. So you probably don't expect to see her in January. Is that reasonable assumption? I mean.
That would be a reasonable assumption due to the due date that she has.
Can we ask you a question? Do you want us to schedule another meeting in December to meet with you?
I, would, Mark, we would, you know, really.
I think that's fair.
These guys, technically, we need to know by the end of the year when this is gonna happen. We thought we had enough time to do that, but. That would be amazing, that, Mark, if that's at all possible.
I don't have a problem. I'll be, I'll be whenever they want. I mean, it's not fair.
Well, I agree that it's not fair and I'm sorry that this happened again, so.
It, it's happened in many instances, well, that's, I mean, there are times when proponents come in and they cancel. We're sitting here, you know, where are they even show up? It's not simply because this happens to be our individual time that it, that's happened. It doesn't give you carte blanche to, for us to have extra meetings for you. Though in this instance, I think could be, but I'd also seen that some of the things could be addressed between now and then with international. Is this, are we allowed to, is this?
No.
No? The discussions of what are?
We open and continue already, so we're just doing procedural, so.
Well, procedurals, do they have to address the things that international has?
It would be prudent that if there are any outstanding issues between the two parties, that they take this extra time to work them out so that it's not an issue if we try to.
Is that legalized wise?
How's that?
So hopefully, should we have another meeting, hopefully, we would hope that Richard could join. Jamie will still be sort of a question mark, right?
We, we won't know, but we can confirm that for the next meeting whether she can or cannot be present.
That would be great.
Can we, can we say, tell it for the two weeks? Does that give us enough time?
Two weeks is Christmas, isn't it?
Today's the seventh, one week is the fourteenth, two weeks is the twenty-first. You, when you continue, you have to continue to a date certain, so, yeah, you have to announce when that's gonna be.
That's kinda what I'm getting at.
So, I'll pick the twenty-first and we can go with that. Consider, we have to say, I have no idea where Richard's schedule is. If we can't, we will have other procedures we can't see for you. So, I'll entertain a motion for a special meeting for Workers Credit Union on the agenda only. I'll entertain a motion for a special meeting for Workers Credit Union on the agenda only for the twenty-first of December.
That's a Sunday.
Was that?
That's a Sunday. No, it's a...
December twenty-one is...
Am I wrong? Yeah, today's the seventh. Sure.
The twenty-first of December, second day?
Second day.
All was in favor?
Aye.
All right. Gentlemen, we will confirm with you before such time that we will be able to see the full member, yeah?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Mr. Sanders, I know you wanted to speak. I'm sorry I didn't get to you.
I thought we were going to have more discussions aside from that. This is the only discussion we're supposed to see without, we can...
Yeah, I just wanted to understand.
Have another meeting to...
Could we do a meeting or, you know, do we know what change the schedule? We've got that.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank all of you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank, those things happen. That's your fault.
Ultimately, I hope Richard's okay.
I, I just wanted to make comment with regards to this meeting and how critical it is to have members here. And if someone is not going to be here, I know Jamie, she called and I can understand with her pregnancy, you know, like that she probably wouldn't be here. But Mr. Richard, I, I don't know what happened. Has anybody heard from me or anything? I think that the board need to consider, um, maybe having some alternates to this board for the sole purpose of specific saying for this rule where the state says that you got to have the full members there, present in order to have a public hearing. Because a lot of things is based on schedule, time out as to when things are going to get accomplished, what's going to take place. And they need a little time to react to some things that you may come up and say, hey, you need to do this or do that. And I just think that, you know, if that's a criteria for this board, I think that it ought to be challenged in the sense that, you know, maybe we need to adjust the bylaw where we can specific, you know, get a couple of alternates for that sole purpose of that and that only. And I think that would help alleviate, uh, some wasted time and resources with, you know, matters like this.
I agree. And had we known we weren't going to see the board tonight with a majority, a super majority, we would have probably made sure we were going to. I mean, again, we just hope Richard's okay. We're not sure where he is, so... But I will take it on advisement. I don't think, I think it's a good idea, so thank you.
Thank you.
Luke?
On the twenty-first, I, I won't be available.
For somebody from your company?
I'll have somebody come in.
Okay.
Just as a heads up.
We, we did have a chance, but during board business to read most of your comments.
Okay.
We're aware. Anything else comes up between now and then, you think of, by all means, you can...
I should, absolutely.
We'll take a look at it.
You know, if you, if you read those comments, I mean, uh, the majority of them are, are, uh, just additional documentation. The plans and calculations, you know, seem to check out.
Right. Okay. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I'm probably, I'll probably stick around for the, uh, the next one. Just in case.
So we do these talks over?
We have Paul that's one over?
I do.
Is that all we've got?
No.
All right. Who's all? Richard White.
He texted it. I like that.
Texted it?
Texted it. How do you say texted it?
You just said it.
There you go. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm all here. We have a conversation about your property against, with somebody. He said, said it's the prettiest property in town. Those stone walls and the...
No, I told you, we're gonna use a beautiful place. It's good? It's a promise, huh? Well, not here, no, just the guy.
Yeah, no, I love it. It is confusing.
It is confusing. A lot of people are questioning this. Why not? But it is confusing.
No, I don't. I don't.
No, I, I haven't really, I think. Well, come on, we just sit there and look at each other.
Engage.
We're trying to do candy, not...
Can each other?
No, I can't let each other tell.
Then one hand?
Two hands.
That's fine. Actually, I can draw them. Haven't done in a long time, though. How much longer?
Eight o'clock is the next...
Hey, I need to know, I plan that we're going to have at least four members for. I ain't flying up for that. No, that's not right. She's done it in January, it's been three months last year.
What's that?
I'm not flying up from Florida to come to the, if we're not going to have a quarrel.
By the insurance.
What?
By the insurance.
No, that's not the point.
That's the point. What is the point?
Well, you have to make sure you have four people here. Make sure that everybody's going to show, but it says they're going to show. But I already know that Jamie's not. She's due on the seventh, right? Isn't it due date the seventh?
I'll check Judy's schedule as well. What time of day were you thinking for the...
Summit?
Summit.
If we're doing on the tenth, I have a full-time job, so I was thinking after hours.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, the comment we had got from Jamie earlier was if it's during the day, then more seniors might be available to attend. But that's...
I know, but I, but I am not able to attend.
There you go.
I do appreciate her comment. I think it's a great, uh, point. But I can't attend. What I'd say is that once we have the summit and any seniors that can attend to the summit, that would be great. And then, uh, I'm more, I can take an hour or two out of the day and maybe go present at the Council on Aging. What we've come up with at the summit, what we've talked about, and, you know, if another member would want to be just saying that would be great. Or one, one other member could go with me and be able to present and talk about it. And, you know, Peter and Mark both like to give their time, so.
Well, in the circumstances, I noticed that you and Mark have been doing numerous walkabouts together, so I figured the two of you...
What are you talking about? I kept, I flew in from Florida last night, so I don't know where I got them walking.
Previous exploits of, uh, K property and...
I've never walked a K property.
I walked, I walked the K on its own.
I, I think you're mistaken.
Oh, I don't know. I was supposed to walk the K with Jamie, but she was...
So, I think it's only family. So you haven't been doing these walks?
I haven't.
Perfect example. Then you should spend some time.
No, I think you should.
There it is.
I love how you can turn things like that.
You should go on with them. Go walk with the deer and stuff, you know, the stuff they have gone in.
Or perhaps Judy has an idea on another way to gather and put and present with, with the seniors.
I can't have a four-hour summit in the middle of the day.
Yep, that makes it...
A what?
Four-hour summit.
I can't either. If I don't work, I don't get paid, so I can't do it in the middle of the day either. And then that evening that you're planning on it? I, I, I know for a fact that I, I'm meeting with an attorney that evening. I'm out. You're in.
It doesn't work that way.
It means does. Why can't?
Well, it's a planning board thing. You're supposed to be here.
No, all of us.
You took the money. You drank them. You drank them.
I didn't drink the juice.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, you didn't. You drank. I'm eating. Orange is healthy. You drank the juice.
Oh.
I win again.
Do we have to sit late early if he doesn't show up?
Well, they, we can't really start it.
No, K, you can't do because, I don't know, actually, depending on subdivision, you can do with three. And A, if you are looking at the A and R, you can do that with three. And preliminary subdivision is not a hearing. It's just a meeting. And that's, you can do that with three. So eight o'clock and eight-thirty.
We can do.
So if the people here are here at eight o'clock and we, and we don't need, we can start that meeting early, correct?
No, because the public has a right to have the input. If they want to say anything on the project, they have to be allowed to speak and be present.
Been a lot of resident interest at, for the eight-thirty, for the ninety-three Foster Street. You would think twenty years' experience in setting up agendas would be enough to cover all the bases and get it right, but... I've had twenty years' experience setting up agendas and setting times on agendas, hoping, hoping that you guessed right with how much time to leave for everything.
Well, normal board business is would be appropriate.
It, it's frustrating.
Well, can we order in? You had Jenny at? Anybody? Ferris? Bueller? Can I tell jokes?
By all means.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're smiling so hard right now. I'm nervous.
Should I tell the, uh, the, uh, the four mothers with their, with their sons?
No. No.
That's a good one.
It is, but tell it when off air.
That's a good one.
But this is a waste. Nobody's going to watch us anymore if we keep being like this. We were, we were number one. We've slipped.
We got to get, uh, um...
Somebody to fight with.
I don't say it.
Because our ratings, we're going to drop right down in the ratings, but we're, we're hoes now. We're going to be down below.
Anybody got any good jokes? We're dying here.
Not good ones on the front.
Not that could repeat publicly.
See, that's my problem. Yeah, that's what Ducky says. Yup, yup, yup. What's the best movie you've ever watched? Or you think is the best-made movie of all time?
Bueller.
Bueller.
Bueller? Nice work. Really? What do you think? I honestly, I think American Graffiti is one of the best movies ever made. Just it has all kinds of great stuff in it. So, how about you?
Never seen American Graffiti.
Should watch it.
Never seen American Graffiti? Wow, you're, the guy's communist.
How about you, sir?
Don't go to movies.
Never?
Not, not for a long time.
American Graffiti's about forty years old, so...
Yeah, I know. I, I seen that.
Did you like it?
So the main stars?
There you go. So it's two guys here. It's the best movie ever.
The stars that were in it. Come on, how many you can get?
Harrison Ford.
Yeah.
Ron Howard. Uh, Richard Dreyfuss. Uh, Su- Su- not Suzanne Pleshette, but, um, the blonde that was on, uh...
Susan Summers.
Susan, Suzanne Summers.
Candy Clark.
Yep, she was, uh, Momma and the Papa's daughter. What's her name?
Mackenzie Phillips.
Mackenzie Phillips, yeah. So I got six. How many can you get?
I could have got all those six.
Well, I got them first. That was me first.
I helped you with them.
I just knew that I couldn't remember their names or their faces were good. That's how I operate. Any other ones?
I have three favorite movies.
What are they?
Braveheart.
Deer Hunter.
Reckless.
What's reckless?
It's a Richard Gere movie from the late sixties, early seventies. And, um, I'm not going to tell you the third one. I'll give you the good. It's a good one. It's a, it's a rated PG movie.
Rescuers Down Under?
No. Legally Blonde.
Legally Blonde. I like the one about, uh, reckless abandonment. You know that part of it? You don't? Can you play it to me?
No, I don't play it. How about favorite animated movie?
Favorite animated movie?
Whether it's...
Oh, um, Jungle Book. Without question, Jungle Book. I also, without Jungle Book.
Which one?
The, the real one, the original with Baloo Bear and...
Necessities.
Aladdin had a lot of subtle innuendos for the adults in that movie as well.
Mine, mine would be, uh... Kung Fu Panda, because I have young kids, so...
I never watched that.
Kung Fu Panda has so many great...
Here's one for you. Uh, in Jungle Book, the, uh, the Buzzards, who do they look like? Even their voices? Anybody?
Peter, Ed and Mark?
No.
You've...
Bueller.
Huh? Nobody knows. Even their voices sound like them. There's four, look at their haircuts. Beatles? That's right, the Beatles. They look like the Beatles. And they talk, talk like them too. "It's all right, Baloo Bear. You can let go now." Are you kidding? His teeth on the other end. Love that show.
Peter, do you have a photographic memory?
Uh, it would be called an idyllic memory, but no. There's no such thing as a photographic memory.
No.
But there are things I do memorize, uh, different pages on the books and I can see in certain things. Certain lines I remember, poems. "Do I dare disturb the universe? And one time there were decisions and revisions which are men who can reverse. I've known them already. I've known them all. The eyes that are formulated, are fixed, and are phrase. How shall I begin to spit out of the buttons of my days and ways? And how shall I presume? For I've measured my life with coffee spoons." You told me one the other day. I was very impressed with also. Let's hear yours.
"Yes, I'll smoke my cigarette and vester my garb of dreams, and I'll borrow no regret. All is gold, the golden gleams. So I'll charm my solitude with faith that life has blessed. Brave and noble, bright and good. Oh, I think the dreams are best." Robert W. Service, nineteen eighteen. Rhymes of a Rolling Stone.
"I eat my peas with honey. I've done it all my life. Makes the peas taste funny, but it keeps them on my knife." I memorized that in the third grade, or fourth grade. My daughter had to memorize a, uh, a poem also. Of all the poems in all the world, guess what she even memorized? The exact same one. Of all the poems. I thought that was pretty... She started, uh, she goes, "I eat my peas..."
Thank God we had to sit here and do nothing.
I said the next line. She went, "What?" It was great.
Can we go home now?
"In the attic of all the wooden chairs, I sat down, staring across the field of gold and brown, soon to be green with delight. It's not that I didn't love you. It's just we didn't see it to each other's eyes." Simon Gagner. Nineteen seventy-eight? There you go. Two of the same ones. Here we are.
Should we take three on or...
It's the season.
Do I get the last one? I get all of them.
You got enough?
Flavors we got. Dark chocolate.
Whatever comes.
Dark's better for me.
Yeah, plus it's good for me.
Yeah. "Hello darkness, my old friend. I'll come to sleep with you again. 'Cause our visions soften..."
You know what? It's time.
Uh, what'd we do? You didn't sing?
Simon and Garfunkel.
You like that?
The new, the new version, Better from Disturbed. You like the new version?
I have, don't know who's, I haven't heard the new version. Those things are...
Disturbed?
I don't know who they are.
Have you heard it, Sherry? The new version of Silence of the Silents from Disturbed?
It's good.
Is it good?
We've been entertaining ourselves for about thirty minutes now, so if we're a little punch drunk when you guys show up. Oh, yeah.
Richard. We need a supermajority for the last two items.
Is he okay? Did he fall?
We haven't heard. I spoke to him a few days ago. Reminded him he was coming, so. As do we.
All right, so read this?
Well, when we get there.
Oh, now you're telling me to stuff in my mouth.
You got five minutes to get it out.
Well, then more of it.
Then I'll read it.
Well, you've done enough.
Well, what do you think is the best movie ever made?
Oh, God.
The best movie ever made?
Don't ask, goodie. Be afraid of what you're gonna tell ya.
I like it.
Godfather's good.
I like the God Must Be Crazy part two. Not probably the best ever, but it's good.
See, I picked Braveheart.
I like it.
It's action adventure.
I picked American Graffiti.
Fast Times at Ridgemont High.
What style was it, you know?
I mean, you can also, you know, I just think it has all the stars before they were stars.
Kung Fu Panda.
I like that Star Wars was the first kid, first movie that I enjoyed as a kid, that my kids got to enjoy.
How about something like Gone with the Wind, some of the classics?
Sure, it's a great movie, but American Graffiti just, it's got cars, it's got love, it's got excitement, it's got, you know, I just, I just like it. I mean, Jaws was a great movie, but it didn't hold it there. Stars before they were stars. Good acting, good lines.
Good direct, too. That was George Lucas before he became George Lucas. No, I mean, um, Spielberg. Yeah, Spielberg.
Hey, man, who cut the cheese? Good lines. Want the truth? That's a good one, but... That's a one you, huh?
Few good men.
The best of that whole thing is, is the, uh...
Jack.
Yeah.
Yeah. No Jack, no deal.
Gotta ask me nicely.
Sure, I'll answer your questions.
You want me on that wall, and you need me on that wall. Who's gonna do it? You? You and I, Bert? I don't think so. Living in a world of walls, and those walls have to be defended. A little code, honor is a way of life. You use it as a punchline. I didn't do it for Batum, but most of the lights. Eight o'clock, that's rocky.
You have a semi.
There you go.
All right. Little red lights on. The town of Littleton Planet Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December seventh, at eight PM in room one oh three of the town hall at thirty-seven Satix Stratics, where to consider the application for approval of the definitive subdivision plan owner of the K Estates located off Foster Street and Grimes Lane pursuant to subdivision control of Mass General Law, section forty-one, section eighty-one K through eighty-one GG, the Mass General Law, section forty-eight, section nine. The project is approximately forty-three acres located north of Grimes Lane off of Foster Street in Spruce Street. The project is shown on a census plan map, R eight, parcel thirteen. The definitive plan shows twenty-three new residential lots with six tenths of a mile of new roadway. Property owner, K LLC, listed on application as Hancock Associates, applicant, K Land LLC. Applications and plans can be viewed at the Plenary Board and Town Clerk's office during their regular business hours or online at the Plenary Board page on the town website, Any persons interested or wishing to be heard on the proposal, proposed application and plans should appear at the town and places designated or provide written comments to the Plenary Board Office prior to closing of the public hearing. Signed, Martin Toolville. Mark Montanari-Clark. Received November twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, at twelve thirty PM.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening. For the record, Brian Goodrow with Hancock Associates, along with the applicant, David Guthrie, representing K Land LLC.
We have interested parties tonight who would like us to speak up. They've addressed us a couple times. These speakers are just for the, these microphones are just for the TV.
Okay.
So just speak loud.
Speak loud. Okay. Along with attorney Cheryl Gould, who is counsel on this project. So, what we have before you is a definitive subdivision application. Now, if you recall, earlier in the year, we had filed a preliminary subdivision, as well as a preliminary open space. We went through a number of hearings and iterations, and now we have come to consensus from that preliminary process that the conventional subdivision is the preferred avenue of development for this parcel, which is why we're before you today. To run through the project, if you recall, Foster Street is located to the west on the side and Grimes Lane down to the south. We have Spruce Street and Fraser Street also located to the south off of Grimes Lane, two newly constructed roads. Now, the K Land, K Estates, as it's being called, is a forty-acre parcel, only about thirty acres of which is going to be developed with the western portion remaining virgin woodland. There are four roads associated with K Estates. We have Furland, which is a three-lot cul-de-sac off of Spruce Street. We have Red Cedar Way, which is just a connecting road between Spruce Street and a new road, Douglas Street. Douglas Street runs from Red Cedar Way down to Grimes Lane. And then Cypress Lane is off of Douglas Street. Generally speaking, the parcel is woodland right now and slopes from the north towards the south. It's relatively consistent, with underlying soils being loamy sand primarily. We have designed drainage such that it's all surface. Essentially, the robes, the roads are curved and guttered, and then runoff is conveyed to five separate infiltration basins. We have one located to the west off of Cypress Lane. We have two located to the south off of Douglas and Red Cedar Way. We have another one located down towards Grimes off of Douglas Street. And then there's a, a fifth one that's located a little ways away down Grimes, ac- across the street essentially. And then Furland, the drainage for this cul-de-sac is actually picked up by catch basins and then passed through an existing drainage infrastructure off of, off of Fraser Street. All the lots range in size from about one acre to two, around two acres. They're all fully conform, conforming to the town of Littleton zoning. Each single-family home will be serviced by underground electric, natural gas, municipal water, and private onsite sewer, uh, septic systems. So each of these lots will have their own individual septic. Generally speaking, our design was trying to maintain existing grade as much as we could. We have a sloped surface, so we're, we're really trying to make it a much more balanced site where our cuts and our fills are relatively equal. With respect to roadway construction itself, there's actually a couple of waivers that I'd like to go over. So as a part of this subdivision, there were a handful of waivers that were requested, and I would like to run through them quickly and just touch base on the reasons why. There's a water study that's required as a part of the definitive application, and we have requested water. We've had correspondence with the town of Littleton Water Department, and their requirement is to loop the existing water main from Grimes, the intersection of Grimes Lane and Foster Street through the new development and connect it on Spruce Street to the existing infrastructures. That's right there, and they have expressed no concerns regarding the amount of water available to this project. With respect to roadway construction, we are proposing differing types of curbing. We're proposing vertical granite at all radiuses. We're proposing sloped granite at all cul-de-sacs and cave cod throughout the remainder of the roads. Street trees, the requirement is forty trees, or, excuse me, a street tree every forty feet on center. We would like that to be waived so that we can space them out variably according to site features, as well as group them to create more of a neighborhood. In addition to the number of street trees, it's also caliber and species. We'd like to request that be waived according to what's available with surrounding nurseries so we can select the appropriate and healthy nursery stock, stock, and not be unnecessarily restricted from what's available. On stormwater management, we're requesting strict, strict adherence to the design criteria, two of which being lot line setback. We have infiltration basins proposed throughout this subdivision, and they are proposed on lots themselves that are less than the thirty feet required from a lot line. And additionally, inlets. Subdivision regs require that the inlet be at an elevation greater than the twenty-five-year event. We think that that is a little excessive, and we'd like to be able to design less than that. There is a requirement for written approval from all utility providers. We know that all the utility providers can provide for this project, given the proximity of the development directly adjacent to it. We have not had any issues servicing those lots. The only questionable one is natural gas, and it's not a question of if it's available, it's a question of when. We requested another waiver for curbing. There's several subsections, and it is for variable materials. We're requesting a sidewalk waiver for the material. In lieu of Portland cement, we would like to use bituminous concrete or pavement throughout the subdivision. And, yeah, so that, that's actually requested twice because of two different subsections. Now, additionally, prior to this meeting, we had revised the definitive application, one of the sheets, specifically the sheet on Furland to indicate a parcel B off of Lot thirty-three. And an A and R was filed previously for K and for Lot thirteen to take this parcel and actually put it into, into Lot thirteen, and at the same time, reserve the future right of way, the right of way that we're trying to permit right now for Furland to make Lot thirteen a fee lot, essentially. Circling back around to, to some of the additional improvements that we're gonna be making as a part of this project, I had indicated that the water main was gonna be extended from Grimes Lane. Grimes Lane, right now, is intended to be widened from Spruce, Spruce Street to Fraser Street to a width of twenty feet, and as a part of this application, we're continuing that widening from Spruce Street to Cypress Street, the newly proposed streets. There's about six hundred more feet of what is currently fourteen to sixteen-foot width that we would like to widen to twenty feet as a part of the development. With that said, unless the team has any additional information they would like to present, we're here and we're, we're happy to answer questions.
Anything, either?
The only thing I'd add, I think, is this, this component here, i- if, if we are successful in gaining our permit here, this piece over here goes to the town as a donation.
Thank you.
Eleven point three acres.
Could you guys also, I know we had talked about the town trails coming down. Are those indicated on this drawing as well?
Uh, yes. Thank you for reminding me. So as a part of this eleven point three acre piece, there is actually a six-foot strip of land that travels the edge of the property out to town-owned land. So there will be an additional six feet available of town-owned land on the outside of the project to connect it to the town of Littleton.
When you say available, you mean you're not gonna put it into walking condition? You're just gonna leave it there, and when the town decides to do something with it, they will turn it into a walkable for addition?
Yeah. It would be fee simple land and not easement, though. It'll be part of that eleven point three acres.
So the six feet would be owned by the town?
Correct.
In its entirety?
Yep.
And these eleven acres, isn't this already a deal you already had set up with the Selectmen already previously?
Contingent upon our successful approval of permits.
So maybe we should call the Selectmen, ask them what we should do?
No, I think we're all set.
When, the, the, the deal we struck with the Selectmen was, was independent of any application we had with you other than the potential for approvals. The deal we struck with the Selectmen was they didn't have the financing to buy this piece under sixty-one A. But we felt that it was in everybody's best interest to offer the town a piece of land. In this particular case, that was one that we thought, providing, obviously, protection for natural resources. This is developable land over here, but it also allowed for the, the continued open space area here, which is a, offered protective from a view shed from Foster.
Where's the eleven acres of this? I see that, from here, a darker green.
It's the darker green.
Yeah. It's running up in here. Whatever we're not using, it's coming in like this, is it?
Yeah, it's the, yeah, it's the entirety of the dark green area that you're seeing.
Does the left of, or it's a lighter colored green that is...
This here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's part of it as well.
But it's a lighter colored green, is that what it was?
No, this is beautiful sand and gravel, actually.
Further to the right.
This stuff?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what.
That's all I see. The eleven acres is really half of it's a wet and the other half is...
Yeah.
Semi-dry.
Yeah.
So you're really giving us five acres.
No, we're giving you eleven.
Six of them.
One would argue the wetlands is more valuable than the dry, in some eyes. Yours or mine, I don't know, but in some eyes, yes.
You did that with a straight face right up to the end. You're up.
I'll be.
My turn?
Lost your chair.
Yeah, we lost the chair.
What?
Sugar coma.
Through the chair? Your life, uh? How do you vote on that? Oh, great. Apparently we have our way.
We've never had our way.
Well, let's see if we can drive on making buy.
Did you listen to this from an open space standpoint?
We did.
And how many lots from an open space standpoint?
I think there was one or two more. Two more.
Two more.
What we didn't see was any really substantial benefit in open space or valuable open space by doing it as a, as a OSRD, and that's why we went back to the conventional.
Do you have a conception of that?
Of the open space? Uh, no, let me, I don't.
My apologies, my kid's here. Plus two.
You good?
Yeah.
The only reason I ask that is because, um, we really, on any thing over, what, ten acres, I think, we get, we are supposed to look at both?
Well, I can, I can offer, if I may, we, we offered, we, we did submit, we showed both to the board during the preliminary process. And I think the board vetted the fact that they, the conventional was the superior design.
You actually voted on it?
Yep, we did.
We did provide both.
We did. On the tree waiver, one of the things I was thinking is, if you did the math for us to show how many trees are required regarding via bylaw, as long as you assure us the same number of trees in any appropriate grouping will be on the property.
Okay. Yeah, we're fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not trying to beat our trees, just...
Right, so as long as we're gonna get the same number of trees.
Cluster.
But with landscaping, I understand it's better instead of every forty feet, have one tree stand alone, maybe clusters or whatever.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
On the species as well.
Yeah. We've been working with, I think, your tree wardens, Jim Clyde, in, in the current subdivision of Dirk and Far. And I believe it's going pretty well. I don't wanna speak for him, though.
Mark, that was the open space layout.
If we can go back real quick just to the A and R, if we have that miler tonight, looking at it, I know we discussed... looking at it, I know we discussed it a little before, I'd be willing to approve...
What? Everything that they've asked for?
The A and R. Just the A and R. I'm looking for a motion to approve the A and R.
That's just the change of the lot line, so if you have a better backyard, it'll...
Thirty-three is an open side lot, thirteen is a...
We get this little piece out of K in the dirt.
And that's what you want out of me now? Do I have to vote on it?
Well, I'm looking for a vote first, but...
You want to make sure Peter's comfortable with it first. Not creating any more lots. All it's doing is just augmenting the lot that's on Dirk now.
Okay. It doesn't add it to the... So what's the advantage to you doing this?
Better backyard for thirteen.
Better backyard for thirteen.
Those kids can learn poems.
Hmm?
Those kids can learn poems.
Hmm. You're not telling me fibs, right?
Never.
Make a motion to accept the parcel B to be added to parcel thirteen?
Please.
In its fashion, only as a backyard.
So move all in favor?
I can't decide with that, though. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Actually, the pens, there are two pens right there. You got me very nervous with that over a couple of lines.
I didn't put it here.
Is that why you always put them over there?
Mm-hmm. No, I like to make your walk.
Yeah, I thought so.
I would never lie to you, but if I did, it wouldn't be sixty-seven hundred square feet to go from one piece of land to another.
Earlier, you said never. Now you're backing up on me.
I just said I would never lie to you, but if I did, it wouldn't be for that.
Tomato, tomato.
Hypothetically.
There we go again. Where's that thesaurus we had about earlier?
Thesaurus?
Yeah.
Okay, talking about more waivers.
Are we back to the other thing now?
No, we're back to the big thing. Stormwater waiver, everything's under, everything is under control at Dirk now, we're good on that site.
Correct.
We're looking at all conventional drainage on this site. The only thing we're looking for is relief on the setbacks from the structures itself.
Setback to property line, and then basically the inlet into the basin be a little bit, it's required to be a little bit higher than we feel is required.
What are you trying to, you want...
I tried to ask that green weigh-in on the waivers before we make a decision on it, since you just heard them. We're going to continue this for another meeting anyway, correct?
Right, because green has provided a cost estimate to review, wanted to get your feedback, your first input before we, before they start.
I had made it clear before that I will not vote for any non-granite curbing in any way, shape, or form for its entirety, because the way I'm looking at it is, the town's going to own all these properties, and in twenty years, we're going to be replaced with vituminous curbing. So you've included them in the curvatures, you've cleared them in the driveways and such. I'm not, I won't, I won't vote for a waiver.
If I may speak to that, I met with your DPW director, Chris Snart, and of course, I'll give you the opportunity to speak to him directly, I won't speak for him, but he was in support of, he's in support of your position going forward in new subdivisions, I believe, under the granite. But in this particular case, where we are well into a subdivision, and this is essentially a continuation, he is in support of Cape Cod with the vituminous sidewalks as well, please vet that yourself with him. I did, I did speak with him directly about that because I was familiar with your position in the past relative to granite, and he felt that it wouldn't make sense to go from Cape Cod. Essentially, we're looking at this as two subdivisions, but society is going to blend this as one subdivision someday, and he didn't feel it made sense.
No, I think, I think, thank you for saying so, and I think we should speak to Chris, because I know that I've had conversations with Chris, and he is of the same opinion as Peter, that we should be looking at concrete and granite everywhere from here on out. But if he's, I'll speak to him and...
Please do.
You got to start someplace, and I, and I, this is, I would have started earlier. Unfortunately, I'm not, it's just, I'm sorry, and we had this conversation, yourself and I at one point in time, and the cost difference you professed to me wasn't tremendous. So that's, that's something I'm just, I'm not going to waiver on in ways, any way shape or form. I just feel in the long term, the town will be better off and more financially secure when it comes to the repairs of roads and everything else, if it's done the way that our bylaws originally wrote. So that's my feelings, and that's feet to the flame on everybody. That's where I stand from here on in. Won't even be a question for me.
Okay. Anybody in the public care to be heard on this while we're all here, we can actually do some business tonight?
What are they going to do with the end of Grimes Lane?
Name and address?
Edmish Seventy Grimes Lane. What are they going to do with the beginning of Grimes Lane? Is that going to be widened?
That's a great question. We actually have a couple of different opportunities, and Dave, I'd encourage you to speak to what they could be possibly with the farmhouse and relocation and redesign of the end of Grimes, if possible.
Sure. If I may, so there was some desire in town by the town manager and the MBTA to realign Grimes Road a hundred and fifty feet up from the crossing, which is their minimum standard of safety, which brings us ironically across the street from the entrance to the parking lot, which makes for good planning. We, out of our pocket, provided a conceptual design to the town manager for that. We had Hancock Engineering do it because the MBTA didn't have a mechanism to fund that, and I don't believe the town did either. And then, from there, I believe he is vetting it with department heads and other board members. So that's one option that's on the table. I think there's a board member on this board that had expressed some interest in realigning Grimes away from the train connection and up into, away from the train connection, I would say, would be the extent of which he requested. But the proper planning would be to bring it across the street from another intersection and at least a hundred and fifty up from the train track. So the town is sitting on that conceptual design, which increases a little parking on the Grimes Road side of Foster, if the MBTA or the town chooses to use it. We are willing to donate the land, if that's their desire, we own the land. We certainly wouldn't make them go through eminent domain because it's a safety issue, so...
Are you going to use that loop around the big rock also? Or are you just going to continue the way it is towards the house?
Well, I can suggest, in the design that Hancock did, there is some collateral damage in the process, which is the farmhouse. The road comes down like this and loops back up here, the hundred and fifty feet is up in here. So they have curvature minimums that they have to meet based on the roadway design. I would suggest that, that the conceptual is in his possession, town manager, and I'm sure he would share it if it was requested, but other than that, I don't have a comment because the ball's in his court.
Dave, thank you. We can speak to it better than anyone else, so. Anyone else care to be heard on the, Mr. Senator?
George, saying the six seventy-two grade rule. Mr. Chairman, what are they asking to be waived?
Ryan, you want to carry on listing again?
The waivers in their authority?
What's the material that they're wanting to use instead of what's being required by bylaw, whatever the case is?
So the big, the big one we were just talking about is the granite curbing. Our bylaws say granite curbing throughout a subdivision.
Okay.
In years past, long before I sat on the board, it was always used as a mitigation. In other words, we would grant waivers for the curbing and allow them to do the Cape Cod asphalt burn, and then maybe do granite at the radiuses or whatever. In lieu of that, a lot of times, we would get open space and/or other items from the developer. In this scenario, he's asking for the waiver because it's consistent with the developments already going in, where he did get the waiver for the granite, but he did put granite at all the curbs and at all the cul-de-sacs. So he's looking to be consistent with the one development he's already done and match it up with the new one. So that's the one waiver. The waiver for the trees, he's really, he's still going to give us the same amount of trees, but instead of having to plant them every forty feet, they're going to go with the landscape features and try to plant them appropriately throughout the development. And then the stormwater waivers, they're just looking to the catch basins or the retention ponds that sometimes you see throughout that hold the rainwater. They have to be thirty feet from a lot line, and they're looking for a waiver from that as well as a height for the outlet, or the inlet, I mean, for the...
For the basins.
For the basins, so.
And the one other piece was asphalt on sidewalks in lieu of cement.
Right, instead of concrete sidewalks, he's asked to continue the asphalt sidewalks, which he already has on the Dirk piece. I believe that's the...
That's a tizzy extent of it, yeah.
Well, who's going to do the plowing there? Is the town going to be...
Eventually, the town. Once, once it's accepted by the town at town meeting, the town will be doing the plowing.
Well, naturally, the granite is better than the blacktop, because if they take the plows down there, you're probably going to get a lot of damage with the blacktop down there. And I think something as simple as the granite for the curb there, I think that, you know, they're going with a material that could stand up, and that with the plowing, and if the town has to go down through that and start replacing, you know, that can be a little bit of a cost.
Right.
Because the town is for the sidewalk goal, and make sure that, I'm on the disability commission, so we need to make sure that the sidewalks, according to code, and that should be something that's going to stand up there with regards to that. I, I find it a little strange, even though they're going into another segment to bill and wanting to care, well, there's always something that starts from here to there, and I agree with Peter. You know, we, we need to make sure that whatever they're agreed to put in there, it's, it's not right to come back in and ask for a waiver unless there's something that you just can't do. And I think, putting the granite in there, I think it's going to be better for the roadway, it's going to be better for the, for the community as a whole, it's going to be less money that the town will have to worry about at a later date, because plows will tear up that blacktop.
Right, so let, so let me answer that first of all. So I, I agree with you, what you're talking about as far as the granite and the sidewalks being important for all those reasons. In this scenario here, one of the things that the developer has offered for these waivers is a five-acre parcel, a parcel and a farmhouse that can be relocated for affordable unit. So we make him spend more money, guess what we don't get? So it's, it's a horse trade right now. So we're looking at these things as, what's the value, and then, and we're going to talk to our DPW director, and he will tell us what his feelings are, because ultimately, it falls on his shoulders to write the budget for his, his department to take care of these roads, so. I understand what you're saying, but it's, we're horse trading right now, so. And they, they haven't been approved for anything, so although it's in our bylaws that these things are required, this is how we come to agreements, so.
Well, you may be horse trading here, and I think that, you know, this should have been done early on, if that's what...
This is the beginning right now.
The intent is here, so that we don't look like to come in and want to do one thing, then turn around, and when it comes time to vote, they say, okay, well, let's give this, let's do this, let's do that.
So no, so no vote's been taken on this property so far, other than we, we voted to accept a conventional subdivision as opposed to an open space subdivision. That's the only vote. So now he has to provide us an open space, which they're doing, and I have to be honest with you, in this scenario, this is the least amount of waivers I have seen, as I've been on this board in two and a half years, being requested, so.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, you know, so hard fast against that and saying that, but I'm just, you know, looking down the road with a little post idea.
Yep, and I think that's why Peter has that position, because he's looking out for the town's best interests as well. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Keith Reynolds, fifty-five, Foster. I just wanted to get a little more information about the house. It sounds like it's going to be removed, based the Dirk farm. It's going to be moved or going to be destroyed, I mean, it's a historical house, I would assume.
So we have a new, newly formed historic commission, is that correct? Or has it been around for a long time?
It's been around for a long time.
Right. They've weighed in on this and said that they, they would deem it to be historic. Therefore, we've had some discussions with Dave, and he is willing to provide a foundation and a septic system if we want to reconfigure Grimes Lane. At the same time, we would have to relocate the house. So, but he would, he would foot the bill for a lot of it. He's already footed the bill for the reconfiguration of Grimes Lane, should the town choose to do so, so. Again, as a, as a chairman, I've approached Dave early on and said that we'd really like the farmhouse to be saved. I think it's an important part of the town's history, and the safety of the whole development is also important, so relocating and reconstructing it and making it an affordable unit, I think, would be the best use of that piece of property.
And the five acres that go with it.
And the five acres that go with it belong to the town.
Just a concern with all the subdivisions coming in. Now, we're losing the character that we've had since I've moved here, like, eleven years ago, so I took the concern that we, I didn't want it to be destroyed, just wanted to make sure that we maintain what, what we have here. Again, we're losing a lot.
The redesign of that, that road requires that house to be moved?
To meet the design requirements, the hundred and fifty feet from the train tracks, and the good planning where you have the two, you have, basically, create a four-way, because you're going to be directly across from the parking lot for the MBTA.
And in order for that road to be put in, to be moved over it...
Yes, it has to go right through the middle of that house.
It goes through the middle of the house.
So, and I, so also, my career as a builder and a building inspector, an old house on a new foundation is a much better structure. Yes?
Amy Wall, two oh eight Foster Street. We moved here in January, so I don't know how long this has been going on, but this is the first notice that we received about any of these public hearings. So is this, how many have there been just here?
This is the first one.
Okay. So we are, we have bought the land, it looks like the eleven point three acres that would be donated. What, what is the, what is that land zone like now, and what, is it wetlands, is it...
So, so looking at the map, there's some uplands, there's some wetlands. The pieces closest to you are, are dry land and are developable, should he chose, choose to do so, but he made an agreement with our select board early on, because a piece of property was in what we call Chapter sixty-one A. So to take it out of sixty-one A, the seller and/or the buyer pays the back taxes for years? I forget what it is, regardless. They were, the town had right of first refusal, currently didn't have the funds. Mr. Guthrie was able to pick it up, but in doing so, in trying to be a good steward and work with the town, I believe he made a good faith offer with our select board to turn over a good portion of the land to the town, so, for open space.
And then, for example, open land right now, the town, what does the town hope to do with that land?
The town, it'll be open space. It'll, it'll, it'll remain as, as you see it today.
Okay. And then I have a second question.
No, let's be a third, but go ahead.
Okay. Exactly, thank you for the exactness. So I live on Foster Street, and I walk to the MBT, to the train and take that in every day, and so I just wanted to know, like, what the town is going to do with the increased traffic flow, because right now, Foster Street is extremely dangerous to walk on, especially because between my house and the MBTA stop, about four or five of the street lamps are out currently. So not to mention that, but just the increased traffic flow in general, what is the town planning to do about that, because...
So that's a great question for our DPW director, but I can answer a portion of it currently. In conversations with him, I know he's doing a traffic study, and he also wants to do a road, and he's, he's requesting a grant to reconstruct the road and put sidewalks in, so there's a whole traffic study going on, so he can...
Sidewalks and all the way across the street?
He's looking, he's looking to go from Tadawon to the train station and up to Taylor Street, I believe, so. At least from Tadawon to the train station, I know that much to be true.
That's kind of part of this whole, like...
Well, this would fall under Littleton's requirements, it's not up to the developer... It's not up to the developer to provide these. But, again, we're horse trading, so if you want me to ask for something, I certainly will.
I mean, with the increase, I mean, how many, there's gonna be twenty-three new homes?
Yeah, so, we're anticipating a lot of the people that are gonna reside here are gonna be pickups and drop-offs or walkers themselves. There's gonna be increased traffic on Foster, but they're, but most of these people, I think, that they're gonna be going to the train or they're gonna be buying here because they want to commute on the train.
Yeah.
So, we don't anticipate a lot of increase in traffic for the train station. Twenty-three houses, two cars, forty more cars on the street.
Not for the train station, but for Foster Street, probably?
Yeah. It's not a large number. It's, we're talking forty cars, two trips, three trips a day. It's not, it's not a huge increase for a road, especially once it gets reconstructed.
Forty cars, each person.
Sidewalk would help everyone there, so that might be something we should ask them.
Yep, so, okay.
How many people tests have been done?
You can certainly ask them. Are there any other questions from the public, in public input? I know Peter has a question for Brian regarding testing, sir.
Want me to ask it?
Please.
Through the chair?
Absolutely.
It's under our purview to ask for septic, for deep hole tests on each of these proposed properties, correct?
This is not an open space development, so that actually falls under the open space regulations, where the density yield plan defines how many lots are in the subdivision, in which case you can ask for whatever sufficient number of testing you want. As a conventional subdivision, we're required to conform to zoning, frontage area, lot shape factor, and it's silent on testing.
Wasn't aware of that, were you?
I was.
Which basically means if they design a lot where they can't get a septic system on it, it can't be built on.
Correct. Things that make you go, huh.
So, Ed, I was gonna jump back to the question about the street lights out and the see click fix.
That's awesome. Can you see this?
To go to the town website, hit the see click fix, or download the app, and report, then that complaint gets to the right channels to get fixed.
That's not national grid, isn't it?
This is the town.
Littleton Light.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We both learned something tonight.
Chris is very proud of this.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Thanks for...
Luke, anything from Green at this time?
We haven't really started looking at the plans with any detail.
So, you have an estimate for the developer for what it'll cost to do the review? You have that in hand, the estimate for the review?
I believe so, yeah.
All right, so, I'm willing to continue, and we'll wait for third-party review, and we'll move forward. Great.
One more subject.
Actually, if I may. We had submitted a request for a lot 22 law release on Durkey.
So, lot 22 on Durkey, that was the one where they actually have the temporary drainage basin, right?
Correct. We, there is currently located a temporary sediment basin, and we have a plan in place to eliminate that.
You have a plan in place to eliminate those basins?
That temporary sediment, yes.
They're not eliminated yet?
No.
We haven't seen a good rainstorm to see the elimination of them. Property will handle that water flow?
We've seen, since the road has been paved, we've seen substantial rainfall. We had three of them here. There were BMPs that we elected to do, use temporary, foundation holes as temporary BMPs till we were able to get the asphalt down and get our catch basins tied in, which we do, of course, have now. There was one here, one here, and one up here. These two are gone, that's the remaining one. We left it as a safety net, we now need it as inventory. We have a catch basin right here, so when, majority of this road sheds this way, we have a small piece that sheds to about here, this is the end of the asphalt here. We've got a catch basin here. If we need to control this fifty feet of runoff, then we'll manage it through a small temporary BMP here as well. We feel we have a handle on it.
And that's outside any conservation?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't understand when you say temporary, I mean, temporary until you do something else?
Till we get this roadway constructed. We have permission from Coscom to proceed on this roadway construction. There's a drainage swale here that ties into a detention basin down here, so we have this cleared. We have this component cleared. We didn't stump it, that's one of our conditions with the, a voluntary condition with the conservation, so that during the winter months, we wouldn't see substantial erosion through here. We do intend, it's getting late, quite honestly, to get in here and grub this area here, but we feel that we can manage the site in the runoff. Our curving, and that's the other thing we did as a BMP, was to install our entire curving log spruce, which keeps the water in the roadway.
What you want? They're looking for lot release on 22? Looking for motion to release lot 22 for inventory for the Durkey farm?
It's already a lot, it's already in the...
Correct.
Mm-hmm. It just has a structure on it right now.
It's got a hole.
It's a hole, it's a foundation hole.
He's halfway dug his foundation hole right there.
Basically.
Essentially what we did. Conservation has no restrictions on it.
I see no reason not to release it. Make a motion to release lot 22.
So, moved all in favor?
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now, we'll continue the hearing, January 11th, for our input from Green. Green, you'll try to get the comments back by the 11th?
I'll try.
Reading your literature.
The 11th, but next month, or is this meeting? This one in particular, correct?
Yeah.
FBI office?
Yeah. And we're reading December 21st for...
Work for workers.
Work for workers. I need that.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She used to do it all, don't be saying that.
Thank you. If we need to sign more, I mean, they'll be signing more.
I thought you had said Cypress, and I was like, I don't know.
Yeah. I wouldn't have acted.
So, we signed that one, you didn't sign the other?
Right, did they need to sign on Hillary and our trip?
So, we gotta sign...
So, this is K, with chest parts of B.
Go come up there.
Yeah.
Sorry? Oh, we gotta go and sign some on?
Yeah, ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just two?
Yeah.
You happy now?
Yes, ma'am.
Why are we signing them on blue?
It is black.
Blue's black.
There's a panel right there.
Doesn't matter, though? Anyone know the reason why it needs to be signed in black and blue, or any other color?
It's recorded at the registry.
I know, it still had to be signed, yeah, it's always been printed in, so that it felt the same. You ready? We're already behind. You gotta read, does he have to read again?
No, it's preliminary sub.
Preliminary subdivision, 93 Foster Street.
All right.
So, please introduce yourself and your team.
Good evening, my name is Richard Harrington, I'm the engineer from Stansbury McNary. They're Bruce Whaler and Brian O'Hern, the applicants from Habitat. What we have is a preliminary subdivision plan for residential for eight proposed house lots in one A and L lot. We are located as an existing dwelling at the intersection of Mill Road and Foster Street, and we have a minor frontage on Mill Road at the intersection, and then there's a loop driveway that serves a home today. We are proposing a forty-foot wide cul-de-sac width, turned into a ninety-degree angle at this location, and coming down, we standard cul-de-sac turnaround. It's seven hundred and fifty feet measured to the end of the cul-de-sac. We have forty thousand square foot lot areas with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, and we're beginning with a little sliver here for the frontage, which we blow up in detail over here for lot one, where we'd have lot one, two, three, and four on this side. We'd have septic system shown in the green, and then there's a portion of the hill that's pitched in this direction, so we'd have some sort of stormwater system in the backyard there to catch the runoff from the clearing in that direction. It drops off in elevation significantly off the back, there's a wetland off-site. There's a stone wall along the back of the property. There's a little bit of a valley through here, where the water comes down to a man-made pond down over here, and where, and then the water eventually goes underneath Mill Road in that direction. Lots five, six, seven, and eight are on the opposite side of the road. We would have your typical cul-de-sac station, catch basins along the cul-de-sac. We would come down to a basin on this side, because there's water pitching in this direction also from the existing terrain of the hill. There's also water running off in this direction towards the abiding homes on Mill Road. There's a little bit of a valley or a swale behind the home in the grassy area, and then there's just sheet flow across through the woods in that direction. It doesn't seem to be a predominant wall along this property, and there might be smaller segments. We haven't gotten, it's not as much detailed as it is back here. So, what we show is with stormwater management, as you know, we have to, you know, control the rate and the volumes in all directions. So, there's water definitely coming down to Foster Street today, so we'd have a combination of basins to work at the intersection and then figure out a way to get, you know, control the water in that manner. Right now, there's a stone wall along the frontage, it's about three feet high, and then there's a little, kind of like an open lawn area in the front yard that we might be able to use for that. So, what we have is forty-foot right-of-way, twenty-two feet of pavement, there's thirty-foot front yard setbacks, and these are, you know, typical home size, about sixty by forty, just to get an idea, and they all meet your shape factor. What we did request within the application package was a waiver. Foster Street is shown, is listed as an arterial street in the town. The posted speed limit, although, is only twenty-five miles per hour, which is a smaller speed limit that you typically don't see on an arterial. That's posted on both ends of this section of the street. The requirement is a four hundred foot offset between intersections along an arterial street. We have three hundred and twenty. Given the speed limit and the rural character of this area, we believe it's acceptable, because all other streets of this manner only require three hundred feet within the town. So, it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck. This section looks more like a slower residential neighborhood, that's what justifies the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. So, we feel that that's an acceptable request to have that. Also, it's not possible to obtain four hundred feet, because our frontage stops here. So, that's the one waiver request that we do have. As we move forward, if there are the minor ones that make it beneficial for the neighborhood to request, then we would consider that also at the definitive level. So, that's, that's the overall view of this. We're at nine point nine acres total for the entire property lot. The existing home would be an A and L lot, and then we'd have eight houses along the frontage in the definitive subdivision.
Is the nine point nine include the other house?
Yes, it does.
So, it's just about ten acres?
Correct.
So, we could ask you for an open space plan to see how that lays out as opposed to conventional, the problem.
It's, right, it's just under the ten acres requirement to require that to be submitted through your rules, right?
I mean, well, and the other issue is site distance both ways, not just one. I need to see four hundred feet the other way as well, even though you don't own it, we still need to see how the...
Oh, there is adequate, for the posted speed, there is adequate site distance. So, we checked out in the field, and we have more than up distance for site along both directions. This is just a local regulation.
Could be the first sidewalk on Foster Street, start right there? Behind the stone wall?
That's on the north side of the street, right?
Yeah.
We had tree plantings and everything else, all that.
What, what fairings is, what are they asking for waivers?
Eighty-foot, eighty-foot waiver for, so, four hundred feet required. They have three and one.
Okay.
That's the only waiver that they would be requesting when they come to that. This is just preliminary tonight.
Not asking for changing of curbs, the changing of lighting, the changes of...
Trees. They haven't brought any of that forth so far. I don't mean, you don't intend to, right?
Um, no.
Okay.
You're gonna abide by all of our bylaws and rules and regulations? We've gotten into the nooks and crannies of the definitive design to see if there are, you know, some kind of little detailed things, but from the preliminary standpoint, it's just the distance from the intersection.
But you have no intention at this time?
No.
Okay. Comment from the public? If you're gonna speak, just please state your name and your address, please.
Chris Mountain, 104 Foster Street.
Yeah.
First point comment question I have is, just brought up the fact that, looking for the waiver on the four hundred feet and using twenty-five miles an hour posted speed limit as kind of a benchmark there, I don't think there's a car that drives down that street that does twenty-five miles an hour. I think, on average, the cars driving down that street are doing at least thirty-five. And Littleton Police Department posts a cruiser across the street from my house at 104 regularly in the mornings on the commuting time, heading to the train station in the afternoon, and, you know, I think using twenty-five miles an hour as a gauge is not reality. While it may be the posted speed limit, it's not the reality of the street. It's been an ongoing conversation in the neighborhood, the local, this serves well, that that speed limit is, in that section in particular, is an issue. And while that's a bigger issue for the town, another point, I think that, in particular right here, with the sightlines of that road, I think that it should be taken into account, that that is just not the reality. Then if you have cars pulling out there, the average speed of the cars coming there, and the lighting on that road is not, is not maybe as designed. My other concern, being on the opposite side of Foster Street down the hill, is that the homes on my side of the street in our section have a history of flooded basements. My basement, some pump runs continually in the springtime, my neighbors does, and my other neighbors does. And I'm just curious, and while you have catch basins, I look at the plan and I feel, I, my reaction is that you're adding a certain amount of water load to that hill with the septic systems in the homes, and the homes creating water, and how has that been taken into account on the water load on the hill? And then, that water is eventually gonna come down into my house, into my yard, and then, and my neighbor's yards, and filter through. And right now, in the springtime, when it rains, we do get water in our basement, and our neighbors get water in the basement. Just questions and...
Okay, no, good questions, and I think the developer's here, so hopefully he'll take it into account and then consider your basement while this is being planned.
I appreciate that.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I guess I wanna echo what you're saying. I'm Dave Plogar, 111 Foster.
Yeah, I guess I wanna echo what you're saying, I'm Dave Plogar, one eleven Foster. They're building right on top of the hill from me.
Okay.
And so I'm looking at catch basins and septic systems uphill from me, and I already get water. When the water saturates, it'll come through the basement.
Okay.
So I, I'm no geologist, but looking at, pull the water up, up the hill from me is, is something I have to worry about. I'd like that addressed.
Okay. George?
Yeah, George, I'm six seventy-two Graywood. The town just had a, well, the police department came before the select one here with the speed limits in the town here. And they are concerned about, uh, redoing the speed limits on various streets. For children, um, especially like on, um, Russell Street, the, the street there, uh, concerned. So he's saying twenty-five there. I think on the cul-de-sac, you know, I think twenty miles an hour, you know, is, is, is a reasonable speed. The lower you have there, I'm sure there're gonna be some families that probably gonna purchase homes in there that's gonna have children. And sometimes people just drive in just to see what's going on down that street or whatever. And I think that it would be to the advantage, you know, to drop it down to twenty miles an hour instead of that. And the other thing I think on Foster Street would be good, which I pointed out at the, at the public hearing that they was having about the street, speed limits there, they may be able to put some warning speed signs up that let people know what they're traveling at speed, you know, over there, because, you know, a lot of people rushing their last minute to get to that train over there, you know, to catch and so forth, so that's a concern. Once they, if they widen that street a little bit there, uh, people gonna be, you know, really moving along over there. And I think, uh, the police department, which I told the chief, you know, even on Russell Street there, I said, you know, if you can afford to have a, a police officer down at a certain point, you know, the same thing as Jim just mentioned, that there's a police officer over there, that, you know, if you got these warnings over there, and you get people that come in there and they're sort of kinda speeding, at least they can't say, "I didn't know," because it's right there telling them that you're traveling faster than the speed limit.
Right. So, with the speed on Foster Street right now is twenty-five in that section. We don't set speed limits for the roads, other than the subdivisions that we might approve, we could make a condition. This exists, so this would fall under the recommendation of the police department to the select board for speed limit change. Speaking to the, uh, the signal signs that tell you your speed, um, in conversations I've had with the chief, there's a few throughout the town now, and he does find them to be effective. He did say you can oversaturate, and then it just becomes, nobody pays attention to those either. So, I think over time, you'll see some mobile ones in town that will move around. Some smaller solar-powered ones that can be atti- attached to a, to a utility pole or another street sign. So, I know that the chief is looking into that, and I certainly share that everybody's concerned with the speed on Foster, for the sake of the children mostly, so. Any comments from you at this point?
Waivers. I hate waivers. You're building a brand-new subdivision. I know Peter doesn't like waivers just for the granite curbing, I don't like any waivers at all. If it's a brand-new subdivision, it should fit in with how it's supposed to be developed, designed in the town of Littleton. A waiver from the intersection is not a minor one, it's not a granite curb, it's not, it's a safety issue. I think we need to involve the police department, fire department, and green.
The DFW.
To see what exactly the implications of that are before we even go forward. It's not a minor waiver, it's not street signs, it's not trees, it's not granite curbing, it's a safety issue. So I think it's kind of important.
I would agree.
That's it.
Please.
Darren Fitzgerald, one sixty-one Mill Road. I own the, uh, slither of land behind this development. And I guess, uh, I'm really concerned about, you know, the impact of lawns and fertilizer and runoff coming down that hill into that wetlands area. And then washing into the pond on that property and, you know, further down the stream. So I, I really want assurance that, you know, vegetation, vegetative buffer is maintained, along the hill.
So as we go forward, my recommend, so we, we can control drainage on the roads and on the sites, but once you get into the wetland areas, it's the purview of the Conservation Commission. So, we appreciate your concerns, and we can certainly can control what's under our purview, but I would recommend that if this goes forward, that you, make sure you attend the conservation meetings as well.
Sure.
Okay?
Thanks.
Will you have to sit in front of the conservation commission?
Please, name and address.
Sorry, Kyle Maxfield, one eighty-one Mill Road. The, the way that they have it developed right now, it looks like it's outside of a buffer zone for the wetlands? So are they...
If they're outside the buffer zones and the Conservation Commission, that's a no...
Is that a hundred foot from the buffer? I don't...
It's the yellow line, the, uh...
Right, the, uh, piece off the stone wall, there's a significant slope off the wall towards the, the, all of color is the, the town map wetland line. And then we offset a hundred feet up into the site, so highlighted yellow is a hundred foot buffer zone approximation from town GIS.
So part of the property is within the wetlands?
It's in the buffer zone.
In the buffer zone, right?
In the back.
Right, so they'll, they'll get a review. Conservation will get a crack out of it, so...
Regardless if they're developing that particular area?
The piece of property is in the buffer, so Conservation will get a crack at it, so...
How much frontage do you actually have on Foster Street?
Two fifty-four, at least, at least two hundred fifty-four feet, the one twenty-one and the one thirty-four, you mentioned.
So that includes the frontage on the house?
Correct. There's probably, there's additional, there's additional frontage. Two fifty, fifty-one. Possibly three fifty?
So three fifty would be to the progress.
To the, to the core, yeah, to the... Oh, no, that just doesn't, that's along the right-of-way side, that's the property corner right there.
Doesn't make any sense from over there, brother, to put you closer, closer to the intersection.
So, we could keep the road tight to the property line, pick up a few more feet?
No.
Just to try to create the ninety-degree intersection instead?
Forty and fifty, right? Two twenty-four, three twenty-four. It's like only have three hundred and forty feet, is what it looks like. I don't know what that number, let's just say it's fifty, right? Two thirty-four, three thirty-four, and twenty, three fifty.
About three fifty.
I can't tell with that number, is it forty point nine, point seven five, or...
Something.
Pardon?
It's close to fifty. Close to that, I'm not sure.
See, the, I just said it's fifty feet, so I just took it as a bigger number, and the total is only three hundred and one. Like I said earlier.
So, we've heard comments, we've reviewed preliminary, you've heard our comments.
Yes.
Need a way to get that to four hundred feet, I think that's important. Addressing the drainage concerns for the Butters, that's their concern. Discuss it more at the next, wanna continue?
Yeah. It's up to them, it's only preliminary, they can...
I, in retrospect for their, their, honestly, the three hundred and something feet that they have for clear, clear view from that point to the other, to the other of the street there, I can guarantee you the, uh, the opening that's at, but, um, the forty B there to the crest of the hill, they've got less view, from what I can tell. I personally don't see it as a giant issue for the, the line of sight.
In Greenwood, I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah. So, I mean, that, and personally, I don't see that being a big deal. I, I do feel that, you know, that the neighbors have concerns about, um, you know, the, the runoff, and if there's a way to manage it so that you can try and limit any added runoff, because now you're making more land impervious, where you can possibly make culverts go to places where they're not gonna affect the neighbors downhill. And again, that's, how do they, how do these people turn around and make the ratings, you know, like some pump goes off five times every two hours? And then after this, it goes up, you know, five times every fifteen minutes? I don't know how, you could judge it, you know, they cause any, any harm to you. Again, the thing's going off all the time, it's going off all the time, doesn't, you know, it's, it's one of those things, it's part of the geological area of what we're in, you know, where the groundwater flows.
A question to, to the folks in the audience, is there a working group or a Butters group that has been in con- contact with the developer on this proposal? I would recommend, I would recommend that you guys have an opportunity to, to speak with him on a one-on-one basis, maybe you could set up a, a neighborhood meeting and...
We had one on Friday.
You did? And you got some input at that time?
We did.
We got some good, good feedback.
All right, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that.
Continue, uh, that, that dialogue, but, uh, we had the first official meeting Friday.
Well, thank you, glad you did, I appreciate that. Uh, I'm sure that your Butters do as well, so. Um, again, I'm gonna reiterate what Mark said as far as sightline, it is important. I think we need to take a hard look at that, if there's a way to increase it, by all means the most, to maximize it. I'm not sure how your Butters on the property they have, and whether they'd be interested in, in selling or not, but ultimately, take a look at, a hard look at that one and, um...
What are the soils like up in there now? I mean, if, if these, the downhill is already reaching water, is, is, have you done preliminary deep hole tests up though already?
No, we have not.
I, I think you're putting the, uh, I, I do some, some horse and carton before I started doing a whole lot more, more drawn. Well, that's why it's preliminary, and it's kinda just a sketch more than anything else, I think, they're just trying to get an eye...
We, we applied for, um, test aids, but then the show went to hell, so we're gonna be out there very soon.
Let them know you're out there doing it, and, I mean, it's, again, it's just good neighbors, and just trying to be...
Absolutely.
And our, and our responsibility, again, of the board, just of the town, and make sure you do things right, and make sure that the existing, you know, residents are protected. But, in the same instance, it's somebody's owned this land for all these years, and they have a right to be able to do what they can with it also. And that's something the neighbors also have to do, you know, it's, it's your, it's your property and your, you have the right to do what you want with it, you know?
Not to get anything, okay?
But again, as long as you work. And preferably, you know, make the neighbors happy. That's, that's the best way to go about it. Because if they're mad, that makes us mad.
Well, can you give us another one?
Sir?
Cut off to a good side with the neighbors here. Well, the driveway curb cuts right there where the road's proposed, would the board be willing to visit the site before the next meeting and then circle back and, and come back to the table and just have one more discussion about that?
Could you put flags out there to see where you propose to have it, are they there now? I didn't get a chance to drive by, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, well, there's, the paved driveways right there, we can, we can mark, so, yeah, right, exactly.
Spray it, right? That's Leahy right there, correct? To your left-hand side, as I'm looking at it?
Leahy's...
Yes, it is, Leahy, yes.
And where's the little garage that was right down by the street?
There's something, it's right about this area here.
Okay.
So you'll see the, the, it's a big white house, there's a loop driveway over to Mill Road.
Bill's old house, I don't know if they still own it, Bill comes when we're growing up.
There was another?
I'm Greg Glock, I'm from, uh, one seventy-six Mill Road. My big concern really is the fact that there's a lot of ledge up there, we were talking about this last week, and that there's probably gonna be blasting involved, I would imagine. That's my concern really, is the noise, the increased noise during construction. I just don't know how that would be mitigated, if, if there is any way to mitigate the noise during construction, right? Mr. Ahearn was saying it's gonna be about a, maybe two and a half year project, it's quite a bit of time. We, having trucks, dump trucks full of gravel up and down Mill Road, going down to Foster Street, Harwood.
So one of, one of the things that we can talk about with the developer is a truck route that might not impact Mill Road, or limit the impact on Foster as well. So we can, we can have those discussions. As far as hammering or blasting goes, to construct, sometimes that needs to occur. They can certainly talk to whoever they might contract for that removal of the ledge, about ways to mitigate. They also have to inform you, and they also have to, I believe, hold insurance on the structures that are surrounding them while they're doing the work, so...
And plus, they have to go through the fire department before they even start doing that. They have to get a, have a safety plan in place, the fire department has to look it over and make sure blasting's appropriate, and they have, there's a whole pile of hoops they gotta jump through for blasting.
So, and we'll make sure that they do it in...
Thank you.
The best of variability, okay?
Well, you're informal, so you can...
No, they're, they're, have submitted the preliminary subdivision. Technically, you have forty-five days from the submit all, which puts us Saturday for you to have, render a decision on the preliminary. I think I heard that they offered to have you look at the entrance and then continue to dis, will not continue, discuss again at, at the next meeting.
That's one, that's a nice way of saying, can we continue this till the eleventh?
I, I do have a form ready to...
We've been interested in continuing it, and we think it would be helpful to meet at the site and, uh, get any feedback that you, you may have, um, while, while we're all there, and then discuss it at another public hearing. Ideally, that's, that's how we would like to proceed.
Well, it can only be two of us, or none of us, or one of us.
Will you post it?
You wanna post a site visit?
Sure.
You can hold a site visit, you don't have to post a site visit.
More than two members?
Often I will post one.
Sure.
I have a nine-to-five job, I'll be driving by after hours.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine. You wanna do a walkabout?
Me and you?
Sure.
Terrific.
You left here or right here, stop.
Hi, Rodden Thompson, one seventy-six Mill Road.
I'm sorry, could you say it a little louder?
Rodden Thompson, one seventy-six Mill Road. Has this property been offered to the town in any way? Have they had...
It wasn't under sixty-one A, so we had no, no rights to it.
Make a motion in, in the hearing?
It's not a hearing.
Preliminary.
Why you wanna do a sidewalk?
Hearing what they got to say?
Take a motion to continue preliminary.
Is that what you're taking?
What?
Let's, before we...
Well, schedule it on the, on January, right, the motion, you know?
So you guys on the eleventh? Everybody's all set? I don't wanna shut anybody up, I wanted to make a comment before we adjourn. You guys can schedule a sidewalk before the eleventh, I'll do a drive-by and I'll circle back with you guys.
You wanna sidewalk before the eleventh, or...
Ideally, we would, yes.
Either one you're available. I'm talking with this next couple of weeks, while I'm still here and while there's still some snow there. This Saturday, next Saturday, all of us, it's a Saturday at some point.
Look, I can, I can go pretty much at any time, I'm working in Littleton, I'm working in Littleton. So I'm working in Littleton.
Wanna do it on a Saturday, do you guys do it on a Saturday?
This Saturday perhaps, but, uh, I don't think I'm building a, I think it's time shortly, you know? Oh, yeah, actually, I gotta go Wednesday, next week, I think. Well, we see about two in it. How about, how about tomorrow? You wanna do it tomorrow?
Friday?
Tomorrow, in the morning.
No, I can't do it tomorrow in the morning, I have to send it out first thing in the morning.
We're, we're flexible.
Figure it out, call them.
Give them your phone number. No, you gotta do it because everyone's here, you gotta set it up right now. Can we do it?
Saturday, nine o'clock.
I can't do it that early. If you're doing this Saturday, you wanna do it that Saturday?
Seven.
No, I'm not gonna be even a guy in Littleton until mid-afternoon.
All right, you guys can work it out after, take a motion.
No, we have to, we can't do it, Mark, you know, we tell them.
Oh, I'll send it something you want.
You don't have, you can tell them.
It's two board members walking the site.
Pick a time whenever you get around to it. What's next? You're on the next meeting, they'll get a time and they'll circle back with you.
Yes.
Okay? Did you have something else?
No, I just wondered, uh, so, should I leave a number, or...
I can go anytime, it's, it's... I just can't do this Saturday early, I'm gonna be away until like noon time.
This is the form to extend, the timeframe, so, um...
A Butters, if, if you want to be included in that walk-around, we leave you a note, your name, or give Maren a call on Monday, or email her, or something like that, and she'll send you an email to know that we're, we're gonna do it.
Members can be here for you.
Is that all right with y'all?
Is this a part of the process where we can send a little form and get it emailed? Is this a part of the process where we can send a little form and get it emailed?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah? Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, sure.
What do you think of the tree bylaw in Concord?
You have to read that.
I still don't agree with the quarter, right? Is that the cutting? Keep working in the... Yeah, now's the time to try and get as much of your concerns out the open as you can.
We have a, but, diameter breast height, tree save area, root, critical root zones.
We did that in Wellesley, we had more circles on the plane, you know, what happened to the door?
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna push it to make it so that you only have to identify the trees you are removing. If they're staying, you don't have to identify.
It's the only thing that...
What is this?
I sympathize with you. I'd want to see Littleton never get another house built.
It's, it's signed.
Honestly, I don't, I don't want any more.
Right.
I pound nails for a living, but I still don't want new houses.
So I signed, so he goes.
Somebody owns that land, somebody's paid for it for all those years, and now it's...
Okay. You can do that.
Well, that means there's not just signatures on that.
It's, uh, article, it's called article sixty-one.
What is this, tri-party agreement for the release?
If you have a certain number of, it's, it's put into your land use, which is either farming, you can leave it as open space, you can have it as, as trees and such as that. So you put it in sixty-one A, you pay less taxes on it because you're not developing it, but then when the time comes that you want to develop it, you go back, four years, pay back taxes.
Just one?
It's just a way to maintain, own a piece of land and not pay the taxes. But that's never been, it's never been filed. What now?
It's just a tri-party agreement that released for Dirk, you found out, or...
No, it's, it's a certified Butters list that the assessor's office prepares, so there are no notices that go out for preliminary. It's announced that the next year is gonna...
Look at that guy. This dude just sits over and...
You wanna walk the site, you...
So you're gonna talk to the selectmen and find it and talk to the others, right?
So I just got a text from Richard just now, saying that he was teaching from six to eight tonight, he didn't know the meeting.
We're not in a position to allow public access to private sites. Okay. I thought everybody was just giving...
You just got a text from him?
Mm-hmm.
This is the same text that I showed you of mine? You got one all by yourself? Can you share that with us?
Somebody, the, the tri-party agreement was...
Signing.
Thank you. That's all I have for you, thank you.
We'll post into a jury?
Yep.
Should, bang, we have a time to... I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
No, you always, you poke and you prod and you bitch and you moan, and you do what you want. Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Nice having. Mark?